Boston's zoning board of appeal hearing for February 4, 2025 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. The hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure that this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that we have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Ms. Betterbraza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
The floor is Mr. Stembridge. Just a note that we are a six-member board today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that, we'll begin with the extensions scheduled for 9:30 a.m. As all the extensions seem to be reasonable, I will read them in one after the other, and then we can, Madam Chair, can direct us towards the appropriate action. First, we have case BOA 659702 with the address of 86 to 88 North Washington Street. And along with that, we have case BOA 1337606 with the address of 520 Dudley Street. And those are the two extension cases that we have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Any questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
I make a motion to grant the extensions as read.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the board's final opportunity case scheduled for 9:30 a.m. The case is case BOA 1163038 with the address of 44 to 46 Soldiers Field Place. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you. My name is Kevin Longo. I'm from the developer's office, and I'm here to present a small project change, 44 Soldier, 46 Soldier's Field Place project in Brighton. With me today is also Nick Zabula, McDermott, Fort Featum Hill. We actually have a presentation. Great. Thank you. Just some quick background on this project. It was board approved back in January of 2021, and then Berkeley, us, the friendly current developer, fired the project back in 2023. Initially, the project approved for 102 units, a small ground for retail space. It's located off of Soldier's Field Road on Soldier's Field Place right by Boston Landing. Next slide. So this is the site location. It is nestled right up there, Leo Birmingham, as we just said, across from Landing lots to the back. It's a dead-end street. It's kind of right by when you're driving on Soldier's Field Road. There's an off-ramp to go up. It's right there by the other street. Next slide. This is the initial site plan for the site. So there are residential units on floors one through six, and you have the lobby and the small retail space in the front of the building on Soldier's Field Place. So Soldier's Field Place is kind of the main street front. As we got to know the site better, it kind of became clear that the retail space was not viable. So we brought the issue to BPD staff, and we determined that was best for the project. We converted the retail space into an additional housing unit, and then moved the location in the building. This is approved by the BPD, and the changes don't create any new really requirement or zoning requirement. Next slide. We mainly did this, as we said, because of the retail market in the area. There's a number of projects that have these small retail spaces nearby, often attached with superior locations, and they've been long vacant. We loaded the site with the number of brokers that we have relationships with, and the feedback wasn't overly positive. So with that context and the ongoing demand for housing in the region, we determined that was best for both this specific site and the project as a whole, is to convert that retail space into a unit. Next slide. So the original project approvals got zoning relief for conditional multifamily use. And for the fire slides, the changes now are the elimination of the retail space, the addition of the unit, and then the small layout change is to move that unit further into the building and with the amenities space. So this is the initial plan change. It's the retail space is on the front, right off the lobby, and then you have a fitness center and amenities space back top of it. Next slide. Then here's the updated plan. We're pulling the fitness center out, kind of giving it some more light, and putting it along the street front, along with a small office and other amenities space for the residents. And then the studio apartment to the right that you see is the new unit that we are discussing now. Next slide. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have groundwater conservation overlay district case scheduled for 9:30. This is case BOA 1680504 with the address of 291 Beacon Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, is that Guy Pad? They sent a request, unmute you.
Yeah, can you hear me? This is Guy Grass.
Yep, are you on for this case? 291 Beacon?
Yes, I'm the architect for the project.
Go ahead.
This is just a renovation of a townhouse in the Back Bay, and we have G-Card requirements for approval. We have the, we've submitted the approval from Boston Water and Sewer Commission for the recharge system design, and so it should be fully compliant with the G-Card requirements.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, oh, sorry, Mr. Semenelli.
Not a problem, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Card letters from the end.
Thank you so much. I try that. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Since the letter has been received for G-Card applicability, I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's through the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. As Madam Chair warned audience earlier, we are a six-member board. And with that, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 a.m. hearing.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Attorney Lawrence Catino for 140 Chelsea Street requesting a deferral.
So that would be for case BOA 1675304 with the address of 140 Chelsea Street. Would you go ahead and explain, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair. For the record, Attorney Lawrence Catino from Richard Lindsay's office with a business address of 245 Summer Street in East Boston, requesting a deferral due to the six-member board for 140 Chelsea Street.
Caroline, availability, please.
We could do February 25th, March 4th, or March 25th.
February 25th should be fine.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to February 25th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 timeframe?
Yes, this is Andrew Melton from Melton Frey Architects. The project is 3236 Acklon Street in Boston.
So that is going to be for...
That's 11:30, so we have to come back at that time. We're just asking for 9:30 deferrals or withdrawals at this minute.
Okay. Thank you.
There are no further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 timeframe. We'll move on to case BOA 1671987 with the address of 252 to 272 Tremont Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is David Ingram, attorney at Goldston Stores at One Boston Office Square in Boston, speaking on behalf of the applicant, Orange Barrel Media. I will give you a brief overview of the project, and then we'll hear from representatives of Orange Barrel in the Box Center. So Orange Barrel is proposing to install a digital sign on the exterior facade of the Box Center building located at 50 Stewart Street. The main address for the Box Center is 250 Tremont Street, as in the case, but this back portion is located at that 50 Stewart Street, as shown on that site plan. The sign is located in the Theater District. If you could just scroll back up to that map, I'm sorry. So the sign is located in the Theater District, which allows digital signs by conditional use permit under Article 11-7 of the code. The BPD board has approved the sign, and Orange also has a license with the BPD, which provides for an annual license fee as well as a revenue charge to the city. Next slide, please. So as of the sign will be installed on the back portion of the Box Center building, which currently has a blank facade, as shown in this photo. Next slide, please. The sign's design, as shown in this rendering, has a, or was refined over a year-long BPD design review process, and the front sign phase will keep changing content. Next slide, please. And the back sign phase, as shown in this rendering, will be a static display with Box Center branding. In terms of benefits, the sign will support the Box Center through lease payments and commercial content for its events. The sign will also display content from Orange Barrel's community and nonprofit partners across the city. And Orange Barrel has engaged in extensive community outreach for the sign, including a community meeting held on December 8th. And through this outreach, Orange Barrel has received several letters of support for the sign. Those letters are listed here, as well as two additional letters from the Asian American Civic Association, as well as the Boston LGBTQ+ Museum. And these letters have been provided to the board. And with that, I will pass it to Casey Sword, president and CEO of the Box Center.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Casey Sword, president and CEO of the Box Center. We're home to the Wang and Schubert Theaters and the Folk Americana Roots Hall of Fame. Combined, our organization has an estimated $80 million annual impact on the local economy. We're seeking approval for the sign in partnership with Orange Barrel, which we see as a vital step in securing the future of the center. For us, the sign is not just about marketing our shows and our mission, it's a critical revenue source. The Box Center is still recovering from the effects of COVID-19 while facing rising costs, maintaining 100-year-old buildings, while at the same time, we have increased competition from new venues in the city and reduced state and federal funding over the last few years. At the same time, donor priorities are shifting, and making fundraising to support the arts is more challenging than ever. So with our 100th birthday in 2025 and the maintenance of the venues, it's very costly. Revenues from performances cover most of our operations, but all of the work we do in the community, in particular our work around youth development, depend on additional funding. So we see this sign as critical to bridging that funding gap, making sure that we can continue to provide world-class arts programming, preserving these beautiful landmarks, and continuing to be a resource for the community. And we hope that your support will show your support of the arts, the local economy, and these cultural landmarks, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
All right, I was hoping if we could scroll down, I just would like to give a small bit of background on Orange Barrel Media and who we are.
Sure.
If we can continue down, please. One more slide. Thank you. Just want to introduce myself. I'm Jake Del Valley Development Director for Orange Barrel Media in the Northeast. I'm a Massachusetts resident living in the South Shore. OBM has been in business for 20 years, operating in nearly every major market in the country. Our current Boston inventory, which you can see here, operating in Fenway Theater District and District Hall in the Seaport. Next slide, please. OBM provides itself on not being an ordinary sign company with an emphasis on our sign design and integrating into the community with partnerships that support arts, culture, and small business. As you can see here, here's a list of community partners we have worked with in Boston. Particularly, I am a fan of working with Urban College, which is depicted here, which is often featuring many of her family's first graduates, college graduates. The sign at Block, as explained by Casey, is unique in its own right, and it's being on a legendary Boston culture institution that needs our support to continue serving the community. We thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing ended. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newbin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office is to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. A butters meeting was held on December 12th, which was attended by two constituents who had no questions in that meeting. The proponents, excuse me, did meet with relevant civic associations prior to that butters meeting, meeting with the CNC on May 20th, which provided a letter of support. They also met with the Downtown Boston Residents Association on May 31st, as well as the CRA on June 5th. The proposal has received five letters of support or non-opposition from organizations, including but not limited to Saint Francis House, Downtown Boston Alliance, the Asian American Civic Association, the Boston LGBTQ Museum, and the United States Department of Agriculture. With that, we'll refer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sydney?
Hello, my name is Sydney. I'm from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a thorough community process with neighbors and good faith compromises with civic organizations. These include a lighting element on the sidewalk, the sign turned off from 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., utilizing dimming sensors, no advertising for tobacco, cannabis, lewd, or bigoted content, reservation of time for community organizations, local businesses, arts, and cultural activities. Councilor Flynn respectfully asks that the proponent to continue to work closely with neighbors on any advertising and quality of life concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Madam Chair, we have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, can the applicant respond to what Counselor Flynn was mentioning in regards to content and whether there would be kind of visual pollution, you know, late in the early mornings? That would be really helpful. And then this is a question for Caroline. Can we regulate that, or is there a suggestion that the applicant works with BPD to regulate some of those concerns from the neighborhood?
You could either do it as a proviso if there are certain conditions, or you can do it for a BPD review, or you could even devote the BPD.
Okay. I just think it would be good to have the applicant respond to some of those concerns from our counsel.
Yes. More than happy to answer. We have been working with many members of the community, including Counselor Flynn, and we agreed to all the provisions that were brought up just now. The lights, the sign itself, will be turned off from the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. And all of our signs actually operate on an ambient light sensor, which works similar to, if you're looking at your cell phone, where you do not need the brightness so high during the day and then at night, or sorry, during the day and then at night it actually turns down because at nighttime you do not need the contrast and the illumination. So yes, we will, we'll work with the community and with the counselor's office, and we do agree to all the provisions that were just brought up.
You said 2 to 7 will be shut off?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
With that, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with two provisos. One, that the project undergoes BPD design review for the signage, and the second is that the sign would be shut off between 2:00 and 7:00 in the morning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1283550 with the address of 9 Sussex Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Robert Nichols, the developer and owner of these lots here down in the Mission Hill District. And we are looking to develop two units. It is in a rowhouse district. And as you can see, we have G-Card applicabilities, and we've already gone through that process. It's been all set and approved by Boston Water and Sewer in the city. We have undersized lots. Both lots total about 1173 square feet. There's smaller lots, 573 and 598 roughly. We are looking to forego, obviously, these violations and get a variance based on, which you can see here with the lot, is it's a corner lot in a rowhouse district. We are looking to finish the lower level and have three living levels above grade. And it's going to be total three bedrooms, two baths in each unit, bi-level living. We can go up to three stories by right, and we were able to go through the process with the community process, the butters process, and get a letter of support from U NLR, United Neighbors of Lower Roxbury. Next slide, please. So you guys can kind of see where the lot is situated. One of the pieces of feedback we got from the community process is they wanted the sidewalk to be a little bit larger, so we did propose in the next version of plans to pull in the project a little bit, I think about about 18 inches, in order to provide accessibility and really just be accommodating to the neighborhood, as well as adding trees to the sidewalks on that side of the lot. Scroll down, please. Keep going. So as you can see from the layout there, it's pretty straightforward, lower level first floor, open concept living. We do have a second means of ingress on the rear of the property, enclosed on the second floor and third floor. It does cantilever over the first story, so we still wanted to at least create as much yard space as we could, and then we cantilevered the second floor and third floor to maximize the living space as well. Next slide, please. Again, this is the unit two. Just scroll down to the last slide. I think that's the next one. That's the bedroom layouts on the top floor, so three bedrooms with two bathrooms up there as well. And that's essentially it. I do have an updated version of this. I don't know if I can share, if the board would like to see it. Based on the community feedback, they wanted us to keep the cornice line of the project, which I think is really important, you know, just for the character of the neighborhood. So we're going to do that, and as I said, we cheated in the left side of the lot a little bit, with a foundational start, in order to accommodate the sidewalk ADA compliance as well as adding some trees.
Can you respond to the... Can you respond to the BPD's comments about being in a sea frog district and below sea level living space?
Yeah, so we're going to make sure, obviously, the site has proper drainage. We'll also have a sump pump, you know, obviously, system in there, French drain system. That way, if anything does arise, you know, we can definitely, obviously, get the water out and allow the lower level to be habitable space without causing any damage and, you know, really making sure we're managing the water onsite and offsite as well.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Benbury. I am the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an a butters meeting held on November 7th, where a butters voiced a few concerns regarding parking, construction timelines, and noise. One mention was also of trees remaining on the property. As one of the butters did mention a hawk lives in the trees, and they were very concerned. A few other butters mentioned trees on the general area, the sidewalks as well. No opposition was voiced during the meeting, with one director butter in support. They then presented to the Neighborhood Association, however, they did, but they were approved. No opposition letters or letters of support were received at this time. Thank you for your time. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for the judgment.
Thank you. Mr. Semenelli with us?
I am, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the board. I would ask the applicant to expand upon his narrative about having sump pumps available because they're strictly forbidden in the G-Cod, and the applicability of compliance stipulates that.
Got it, yeah, I wasn't aware of that. This is my first time going through a G-Cod process, so I had a civil engineer, he's not on the call, but he designed the water drainage for the site to ensure that we'd be compliant with the G-Cod requirements there. But yeah, so we wouldn't be allowed to use sump pumps.
Then, Madam Chair, I respectfully request a deferral on this, and the reason I'm requesting a deferral here is that the no harm letter stipulates that there'll be no harm to groundwater onsite or adjacent lots, doesn't mention any of that at all. And the purpose of the no harm letter is to make sure that we don't have any issues with the watering and jeopardizing buildings that are supported on wood piles that are not only adjacent to his building, but also the building itself.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do you want me to go through the raised hands, or? Yeah, okay, perfect. Let's look at a, we have, sorry, someone on the panel inside. Jeremy, are you still scrolling down?
Yes, ma'am, I did want to add one more to my testimony. I did go to mention that they did go before the civic group UNLR, and they did receive a one support letter from that civic group, my apologies.
Thank you. And Marco, you looking to give testimony here?
No, I just wanted to voice my opposition.
Okay, can you state your name and address?
Marco Perona, 7 Sussex Street. I'm the building that will be, this will be placed up against, and I'm concerned, you know, there's already not enough parking, and we're adding all these bedrooms, and I don't see any plans to add any more parking. And the construction that's already occurred in the neighborhood seemed to coincide with the arrival of rats, and I just am not excited about the prospect of construction. This is a historic neighborhood with historic buildings, and, you know, new construction, I feel, will just ruin that history.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have no additional raised hands at the moment. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question, if Jeff Hampton is on from the BPD. Just want to understand, you know, about their recommendation for denial, but then the response the applicant gave, you know, are those measures, are there measures that make the BPD comfortable with approving sort of living space below those standards?
I think there are two different issues, Katie, as it deals with groundwater replenishment and then the issue of flooding on the sea frog district.
I think that was the initial response to the chair's question around the BPD recommendations. I didn't know if...
Although Mr. Semenelli also just mentioned...
Right, no, yeah.
So the response to correct the BPD issue seems to be in conflict with...
Mm-hmm, exactly. So...
I think that, and Mr. Semenelli is here to explain it, I think there are two different issues. The no harm letter really deals with protecting piles of existing structures in the adjacent vicinity, where the flooding in itself is an issue that deals with just damage and being per zone, per code, that it's a violation to have any habitable space in a flood zone.
Right, that's what I was sort of trying to understand is, are, yeah, I, was Mr. Hampton available?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Weewell? Yes. Thank you. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. As you have been, or you have seen in the past few meetings, any sort of living space, bedrooms, anything that is within a sea frog, whether it be in the south end, or last meeting it was in the north end, we are against having that kind of living space in the basement when it is in a sea frog, and that's why we are recommending denial. As you saw, we're not opposed to the residential use, but having those bedrooms in the basement in a sea frog, that's not something that we can support, and we think that this project could be, you know, redesigned and done better without that living space below, in the basement, rather. So that's why you see our recommendation of denial without prejudice.
Okay, no, that helps, and it just seems like there is no mitigation to get around that, it's just a across-the-board policy or recommendation.
From our point of view, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have one comment.
Yes.
Yeah, so, question for you, so this particular site, the rear of the property is at grade, does that make a difference?
In relation to, in relation to the flooding, or in relation to the G-Cod compliance?
G-Cod compliance, I mean, I think is self-explanatory, I guess in relation to the flooding. Being that, you know, we're at grade at the rear, you know, is that, is habitable space allowed at grade? Because it isn't, it's below grade at the street level, but at the rear of the property, it's at grade, so I don't know how that impacts our ability to finish the space below there.
Mr. Hampton, question?
Not from the city's point of view, no, that's splitting hairs, and you have living space below grade in a sea frog, and we can't support that.
Understood.
Given Mr. Semenelli's request, may I have a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice, to allow the applicant to redesign without habitable living units in the basement, and also to be able to provide to Mrs. Semenelli the no harm letter as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 167133 with the address of 14 Winthrop Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, and members of the board. My name's Patrick Gallagher, I'm with Gulston and Stores, with the business address of 1 Post Office Square in Boston. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Community Movement Commons Inc. Community Movement Commons is a unique and unprecedented collaboration of six Boston nonprofits who have joined together to develop a space that will give each of them roots and a place in the heart of the communities they serve. These six nonprofits are the Neighborhood Birth Center, Sisters Unchained, Matahari Women Workers Center, Center for Economic Democracy, Resist, and Movement Sustainability Commons. Today, I'm here with Nashira Burial, Executive Director and Founder of the Neighborhood Birth Center and President of Community Movement Commons, and David Saladick, Senior Principal with the Project Architect Mass Design Group. Community Movement Commons is proposing to redevelop the property at 14 Winthrop Street in Roxbury as a collaborative space, featuring a birth center in about half the space, and in the other half, combination of office, meeting, and other communal areas that will be shared among the six partner organizations and their constituents. We can just go back up to the prior slide, please. CMC was very deliberate in choosing this property, which the organization purchased in 2023. It's just south of Nubian Square and in an area identified by the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan as having a need for the types of neighborhood and community services that these organizations provide. Next slide, please. As you can see, the property is made up of four separate parcels totaling about 20,000 square feet. It's located entirely in the 3F 4000 sub-district, but nearly adjacent to the MFR Local Service and Dudley Square EDA sub-districts, as you'll see in a couple slides. Next, please. The property is currently improved by two residential structures, one of which, the Red House, which runs on Winthrop Street, is structurally unsound and has previously been ordered to be torn down by ISD. Next slide, please. David and Nashira will talk more about the design, but high level, what we are proposing is a two-story, roughly 10,500 square foot building with 11 parking spaces. A substantial percentage of the property will be usable and landscaped open space. Next slide, please. Based on the underlying zoning, we are seeking variances for clinical use and office use, a conditional use permit for community uses, and a variance for front yard setbacks on Winthrop and Kearsarge. And next slide, please. And just lastly, before turning it over to Nashira, I wanted to highlight, and if we can actually go on to the next slide, wanted to highlight the significant number of community and institutional uses that are in the immediate vicinity of the property as further evidence of why this is an appropriate location for this use. And with that, I will hand it over to Nashira Burial. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you for your attention and time on the board. I wanted to take a few minutes to tell you about our vision and how we got here. The first one, I want to orient you to how we hope to use this space and the community benefits. The next slide, please. There will be three main uses of the building. As Patrick said, the majority of the building, just over 50% of the square footage, will be the city's first birth center, so more about that in a minute. There will also be about 2,000 square feet of shared office space, which will support some of the staff of the other organizations who co-own the property, and there are about 2,700 square feet of gathering and shared space. Next slide. About the community impact, the commons expects to create 27 new full-time jobs, 56% of which will be accessible to align with the Roxbury hiring plan. We added spaces designed for community use, including a multipurpose room, indoor and outdoor meeting spaces, a kitchen, and a podcast room. The truth is, many organizations are struggling with high rent, and this building gives them a permanent home, allowing them to keep doing the work of advancing social justice and organizing. The birth center at the Community Movement Commons is about advancing health equity and addressing persistent racial inequities in maternal health outcomes, explicit goals on both the city and state levels. Birth centers are by definition home-like facilities, usually two to four bedrooms, designed for people who are pregnant and laboring and getting full spectrum midwifery care. They are not hospitals or clinics on the scale of a Whittier Street or a Domet Community Health Center. So in our quest to find a home-like space for people to give birth in Roxbury, we fell in love with this location because of the neighborhood feel while also having access to public transit and being just a few moments from Boston Medical Center, which is our transfer hospital, and a few cases it will require an emergency transfer. I wanted to say a moment about the reality of birth centers in the country and in the Commonwealth. Most birth centers in the country operate in a deficit, struck by high rents and construction loans. On top of that, insurance reimbursement for midwifery is low. There have been 12 maternity unit closures in the Commonwealth in the last decade, and as of today, there's one birth center open in the state. It's out in Western Mass, so two and a quarter hours from here. What's unique about this partnership is that the Community Movement Commons allows this birth center to operate financially because of sharing costs and resources with our partners. I've been at this for 10 years, and I can tell you with certainty that Boston would not have a viable birth center without the Community Movement Commons partners' financial investment and willingness to share the space. I want to share the sentiment briefly of an a butter who couldn't be here today. Stephanie Crawford of 22 Winthrop Street says the Community Movement Commons will be a light in our community for Black maternal health. The maternal health world needs to be more centered in the community in different ways, because I think 14 Winthrop would be a beautiful, warm place to give birth in my community. Next slide, please. So we've been involved in talking to the community about this project since we learned about the property in August of 2022. This space is not just about the organizations that bought it and for our use, but for the community, and so we've been very concerted to engage and listen to neighbors. As you can see in our submission, we have broad support, including 60 of others and many residents and organizations that live in the vicinity of the property. Late in 2023, we brought our initial design to two neighborhood associations to hear their feedback prior to submitting our rejection set to ISD. It was clear that some didn't like the lack of green space and how dense that iteration of the building was at four stories and 20,000 square feet. Next slide. As a result of these community conversations, we paused our submission and dedicated most of 2024 to redesigning the project to integrate that community feedback. In consultation with neighbors and our architects at Mass Design, we pivoted to an entirely different design that keeps with the scale of the neighborhood and is more appropriate for the property. You can see here, the red outline shows a footprint of our original design, and the blue shows our current design. A byproduct of this redesign is there's less volume and less foot and vehicle traffic. The new design is half the previous size and preserves half the space for usable green space. With that, I'll pass it off to our architect at Mass Design, David Saladick.
Good morning. Next slide, please, and thank you to the board for having us. I'll speak briefly to some of the design aspects of the project. In addition to the change of use variance, we're seeking a variance for front yard setback depth. However, we are improving the setback condition relative to the existing buildings. In this diagram, existing building footprints are shown in pink, and the proposed footprint of our design is shown in gray. On the north side, on Kearsarge Ave, we're increasing the existing setback distance of 3'4" to 7' for the proposed design, and on the south side, we are maintaining the setback of approximately 6.5 feet of the existing Red House onsite. We believe this is appropriate because it aligns with setbacks of other adjacent buildings on Winthrop Street, some you can see just to the right of our site. Next slide, please. In terms of the building height, we are well below the allowable limit of 35 feet with an average roof height of about 24.5 feet. The proposed two-story design is also a reduction in height from the existing three-story white house, the outline of which you can see in purple on this drawing. The design as proposed preserves existing views and access to natural daylight for surrounding neighbors. Next slide, please. In terms of the look and feel of the project, we studied the surrounding context, drawing inspiration from surrounding homes to help inform decisions on materials, form, and color, so that the project fits into the existing fabric of Roxbury and also pays homage to the Red House, which holds nostalgia in the neighborhood. The project is intentionally designed to feel like home. Gable roofs and shingle siding give an intentional residential feel, and pops of color refer back and honor the Red House. Next slide, last slide. Taking advantage of the one-story change of grade of the site, we have two main entrances to the building, one on the ground floor for the birth center from Winthrop Street, and the other pictured here on the second floor to access shared office and gathering spaces from Kearsarge Ave. At both of these entrances, birth lanterns will be lit when a new baby is born, communicating to the neighborhood that a new life has entered the world. And with that, I will cede my time and pass it back to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Quick question, is there any parking onsite?
Yes, there is. There are 11 parking spaces accessed off of Winthrop Street via an existing curb cut.
Thank you. And are they just sort of first come, first served, or are they designated for the different uses onsite?
Yeah, great question. There's one spot that is designated for an ambulance, which will always be reserved in the case of emergency. Four spaces are dedicated for the four birthing... Four spaces are dedicated for the four birthing suites for families who are birthing there, and the remaining spots will be shared by the tenants. There's no parking allowed on Winthrop Street, so users of this building will not be parking there. It's reserved for residential parking.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, it seems that the initial project was proposing solar panels. So I'm wondering if this new proposal is also proposing solar panels or not?
Yes, we are. In some of the diagrams, we've shown them. The roof has been designed for that. I'm sorry, they're not appearing in the rendering, but that's absolutely the intent and has been designed for those.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I'll start. I would comment. The project would seem to be very worthwhile in this neighborhood, in particular, neighborhood of Roxbury. The two houses that are on the property now, I believe you said one of them. Well, are they both occupied or not?
Mr. Secretary, neither of those homes are occupied today. One of them, the Red House, has been declared structurally unsound, but neither of them are occupied.
So in this case, you wouldn't be displacing any residents?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Have you looked at any other areas? I mean, it's a hop, skip, and a jump from Nubian Square itself. Was that, did that come up? A place like that come up with consideration?
Yeah, thank you.
Nashira.
We did search for property for two years before finding this location. We looked, we had a radius of a 10-minute drive and ambulance ride to Boston Medical Center, so that determined the area that we were searching in. And as I mentioned, we are really interested in having this feel residential and home-like. Most birth centers around the country are actually in renovated homes. And so it was not our vision to have the birth center like in a plaza or in a commercial building, but to have it adjacent in that way. And so we're really excited to find this that is adjacent to commercial use but has a residential feel. And we did look for two years, and it was hard to find a space that we needed.
And I'm sure you've been told that this is basically in one of the historical districts, all districts in Roxbury are historical, literally. That's my opinion. But this is a designated historical district.
Mr. Secretary, I would just note that while it's a national registry district, I don't believe it's a city of Boston historic district. So I would just make that a decision.
It's actually in the neighborhood design district, which alludes to historic districts, surely, so. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you. Mr. Langham, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I'm just curious. I'd just like to really know, how is this going to really benefit the community?
Yeah, I'll take that one. I think in multiple ways. One, birth centers are proven to improve outcomes and experiences. So in Boston and in Roxbury in particular, there is a history of racial inequities, worse birth outcomes for Black and Brown folks. And so birth centers are demonstrated to improve those outcomes and experiences. So it's literally life-saving. State-of-the-art care provided by midwives who are experts in natural physiologic birth. So in addition to the laboring and birthing at the birth center, also full-spectrum midwifery care, so family planning, everything through menopausal care. On the second floor, the use from our community partners, it's the missions of each of these organizations. It's for community benefits, so advancing economic development, supporting young women whose families are incarcerated. So a lot of the organizations already have roots and do their organizing in Boston. That's as Masahari Women's Workers Circle. And then again, 2,700, excuse me, 2,700 square feet are really reserved for community benefits. So we imagine people being able to host their neighborhood association meetings there, Akim Sanera there, to use the space for community events and activities.
Just one more question. I think I overheard you say, "Will this be like free care," something like that? Did you say free care?
I didn't use those words, but it's a good question. The expectation is that all of the clinical care of the birth center will be covered by insurance with more than 50% of our patient population being on mass health. So we're very committed to serving the immediate population.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Yes. I have some questions related to just responding to Sierra Tilton's from our Disability Commission's feedback on the project as it applies to accessibility. It was commented that the parking space that you have noted on your site plan as five should be the accessible parking space. Currently, you have it all across the parking lot, and typically, you wanted to have it as closest to the front entry of your building. And then the other, and I think you can accommodate that based on what I see. And then the other is, was noted that a lot of your seating spaces in the outdoor does not accommodate for someone in a wheelchair. So if you can please accommodate at least one wheelchair space where there's fixed seating or even in the birth garden as well, that would be really helpful. And then given that this is for the public, some have public routes to ensure that you have accessible kind of routes in the interior of your plan. So if the architect can let me know if all these things can be accommodated, that would be great.
Sure, I'd be happy to respond to those. Yes, absolutely, all of those can be accommodated. Currently, we'd be happy to relocate the accessible space in the parking lot. I will say, the only reason it's located where it is is we were sharing the required space next to that parking lot with the ambulance parking. There was some benefit to co-locating those, but if the preference is to move it, we would be happy to do so. The exterior spaces, for example, the birth garden are currently accessible from the interior. We will take a look at the community space, the community courtyard on the other side of the building to ensure that that is accessible from the interior of the building. There's a very steep grade, and so accessing it from the sidewalk is challenging, but we can certainly make that accessible from the interior of the building. And currently, you know, interior access for accessibility has been accounted for throughout the building. There are elevators, and the widths of, you know, interior hallways are already currently planned for accessibility. So we'd be happy to accommodate all of those comments into the design.
Great, thank you. No further questions.
Madam Chair, one more question?
Yes, then I know we have a bunch of raised hands, so I want to make sure we get to them. Please, Mr. Sante.
How much open space will be part and part of the project?
Did you want to take? It's about 10,000 square feet of.
Yeah, I was just checking my numbers. It's about half the site, about 10,000 square feet of space. So we're occupying half the site and leaving half of it for open space.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll open it up to public testimony. You know, I know Rep. Tyler wanted to speak, so if I could ask her to speak. And we do have many raised hands, so if folks can build on each other's comments after that and try not to repeat, that would help us allow more people to speak. Thank you.
Am I okay to speak?
Is Representative Tyler on?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning, Chair Dong. How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much. Hanzi, Gee, David, Giovanni, Norm, Katie, Chevelle, Alan, David. Good to see you all. Thank you so much, Jess, for ushering this meeting. I really appreciate you guys taking me out of turn and allowing me to speak. I'll share some quick remarks about the birthing center, which I do think, a birthing center is a great initiative, especially for someone who just happened, you know, to have a baby and give birth over the last month, especially when you have partners that I particularly like, and I do a great work in the city of Boston, partners like the Boston Medical Center. It's, you know, it could be a positive thing. However, I do think that right now this project should be deferred and that Roxbury may not be fitting for this particular project for three reasons. The first I'll definitely say is the partnership. I'm concerned a little bit about that in that it may not be complete and that some of the partners may not be fully committed. And especially in a time right now where the landscape has changed as far as funding is concerned, and funding definitely is going to be limited over the next couple of years, I'm concerned about that. So feasibility and financial feasibility is of concern to me, for one. The second reason is relating to the abutters. And I'd just like to make sure that we follow the city policy and make sure that how we define the director abutters is how we're doing things here. I did see that there was a list of abutters, a list of supporters, actually a lengthy list of supporters. However, the list was of concern because a lot of those folks weren't director abutters. And after having had coffee with a lot of the director abutters in the area recently and just listening to their concerns, particularly the women who happen to live next door, they were concerned about a lot of the, you know, the small pieces of the project or bigger pieces of the project. And so I'm concerned as well. And so I'd like that to be noted. Number three is actually the business plan, another concern that I have. You know, to Norm's point, this is a historic district, no matter how you cut it. And those two buildings that are the two homes that are, you know, on the three, on the four parcels kind of split across the parcels are historic homes. And I just can't see, you know, tearing down historic buildings, particularly now during the middle of a housing crisis, to be able to build something, a structure. It doesn't matter what it is. And also too, like just with office space, like a little bit of something more meaningful would mean more to me as a reps that's concerned about affordable housing and preserving historic homes. So I'd like that to be considered when you guys make your decision. And last but certainly not least, I actually just jotted this down as, you know, thinking about my personal experience just giving birth within the last year. And I did hear that the team noted how, you know, it'll be affordable. But I just wanted to note that there are other models like this in New York. And again, talk about funding. Funding, you know, opportunities are definitely going to be changing over the next couple of years, particularly as someone who oversees a $3.6 billion budget every year. And some of those, some of these efforts cost upwards of $1,500 a night to be able to stay in a birthing center like this. New York has a really good model, but it's pretty expensive. And you talk about, you know, closing the wealth gap and the average, you know, the average wealth income, the income of a Black family or family in general here in the city of Boston, particularly in Roxbury, I'm not necessarily really sure that they'll be able to meet that should prices go up or just being in uncertain spaces is just not really acceptable for me. And so I just would like this project to be deferred. And so I really, I know that this can happen. There have been other projects in the area that, you know, have, they have worked with the local, with the director abutters and the local neighborhood group. Started off in the rocky space. It ended up going really well. But right now, this project is just not where it could be. So I'm on that. I want to thank you guys so much for having me, and I appreciate you being here.
ONS is? Yep, keep going. Please try to be brief. And if you are not a director abutter, we want to hear from director abutters first.
Do we hear from ONS?
Yes, after the, sorry, after the election.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rochelle Senteo, and I'm here on behalf of State Senator Liz Miranda. Although she couldn't be here today, she did have remarks prepared, so I'm going to share an excerpt from that briefly. As many of you know, she recently championed and successfully passed a maternal health omnibus bill which prioritizes support for birthing individuals and secures funding for birth centers through a dedicated line item in our state budget. Now is the time to bring these policy commitments to life by ensuring that communities, especially historically underserved communities, have access to the care they deserve. Boston and Roxbury in particular is in dire need of this birth center. Right now, there's only one birth center in the entire state of Massachusetts located on the western part of the state. This lack of access is unacceptable, especially for communities of color where disparities in maternal health outcomes are stark and well documented. The establishment of this birth center is a meaningful, life-saving investment in our families, ensuring that more individuals get to give birth safely with dignity and in a setting that reflects their needs and values. It will provide vital resources for birthing families, particularly those focused on improving black maternal healthcare outcomes. And additionally, it'll create more opportunities for grassroots organizing and sustainable business development, all under one roof. We have a real opportunity here to be on the right side of history and to build a future where every birthing individual has access to the care that they need, where and when they need it. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we look forward to seeing this transformative project come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have enough 14 raised hands in the attendees section. Yeah, did you, was the ONS speaking also?
ONS, are you on?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of two abutters meetings held on October 2nd and another on December 12th. The first meeting heavily attended with over 120 attendees, and the majority of attendees were in support of the project and a few abutters in opposition stating they do not want the commercial proposal in their neighborhood. The second abutters meeting was well-attended, but with majority of attendees heavily opposed. Heavy opposition was voiced multiple times to a commercial property building in their residential neighborhood. There were other concerns were voiced regarding the size of the project and the scope of the birthing center with office spaces for their supporters. A abutter stated the proposal is more or less an office space with a birthing center. The opposing abutters stated they are not against a birthing center, but they are heavily against being a, having a birthing center in their residential neighborhood, citing the distance of the commercial area of the street would be a more suitable location. Some voiced they would like to see the property remain residential. Other concerns, such as the lack of collaboration, cooperation with the neighborhood were voiced, and with an added concern or frustration rather stating the first meeting was stacked with supporters from outside of their neighborhood and not enough abutters were heard because there are not over 120 abutters in their neighborhood. And with no abutters getting to speak during the first meeting, we only heard from everyone who does not live there, who are in support, while every abutter who is actually affected is opposed. The proponent then met with a small community group with myself and the neighborhood liaison in attendance, where they were able to have more dialogue. But again, abutters voiced only opposition to the location, asking why it cannot be located in the commercial area, feeling that they and their neighborhood are being taken advantage of, and the center does not help any abutters, but only outside constituents. One abutter went on to state, everyone seems to want to tell us what's good for our neighborhood, but do not want to hear their opposition. Next, they presented to the Roxbury Path Forward, where again, the proposal was met with heavy opposition, again regarding the same concerns, which I won't reiterate here at this time again. We have received 26 letters of support and five letters in opposition. Thank you for your time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Okay, Sophia and then Lorraine.
Hi, my name is Sophia Burks. My residence is 19 Winthrop Street, which is directly across the street from the site. Allowing the zoning of these homes to change will impact the whole neighborhood. Once this door is open, others can come purchase a home on Winthrop Street and request to demolish and build another office building. Building this commercial space requires the neighborhood to change the zoning use from residential to commercial. If approved, if given this, for this project, the exception to the zoning code will become the rule. Once this door is open, it will be open forever. You know, the city talks about how housing is vital. And here we have businesses, six businesses, nonprofits, who want to demolish two homes to build an office building in a residential neighborhood. Nishara, in her presentation, did mention how the cost of paying high rent has become a burden for some business owners. That same burden has been put on families as well. And taking away the opportunity to build residential housing, even if it is income restricted, is here if the committee decides to move forward with approving this. There are plenty of commercial properties available in Roxbury and in Nubian Square. We have met with several developers who are interested in purchasing 14 Winthrop Street and the parcels surrounding. If the houses have to be demolished, then the land should continue to be used for housing. That has been our consistent, ongoing, never-wavering message. Housing, not an office building or a clinic.
Thank you.
Yep, Lorraine.
Hi.
Please keep your comments brief, so we can.
I will. My name is Lorraine Pangwiler, and I organize the Neighborhood Association Roxbury Path Forward. And we have asked our elected representatives, China Tyler and the City Council, Tanya Fernandez Anderson, to defer this hearing. And a major reason is that they have not completed the community process. They have not met with the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which, again, Asha Janey, who's the Roxbury liaison, often goes to those meetings and is aware of that requirement. And I won't repeat what Sophia, the director abutter, has said, but I do want to point out to you, in 2020, at a site that, where a house had burned down at the corner of Winthrop and Warren Street, a developer wanted to build an office building on this main arterial street. And the neighbors, again, because of their deep commitment to housing, came to the ZBA and said that they would like it to remain a house. And under the same zoning code, because the zoning code hasn't changed yet, the ZBA agreed and denied permits to build a, an office building. And so we do not know how you can take the same zoning code and then deeper into the neighborhood, approve this. And so the neighborhood has a lot of traffic congestion, as it was pointed out. We do have four churches, we do have two schools. And this plan, which the nonprofits that originally bought the building, like City Life, Vita Urbana, although they still own the building, or a portion of the buildings, or a portion of the building, they're saying they're no longer going to move in. So we've already seen a change in the nonprofits that will be in the building. So we really ask that it would be deferred for more discussion, and we'll hope that you will agree with the residents that own homes on Winthrop Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany?
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Bethany Serota, Roxbury resident. I live at 47 Clifford Street. I just want to speak to the sustainability of the birth center. We've learned from the past. Other birth centers have closed because they didn't have the support or the structure to sustain themselves. You know, we, with this project, it's so different. We're building strong partnerships with philanthropic organizations across the community to really ensure that this center.
Are you a part of the applicant, application? It would be great.
Yes, she is an immediate abutter.
I would just love to hear from the abutters, and then we will give.
Oh, sorry about that.
For the applicant to respond. Thank you.
Can we, is everyone's hands raised, are the abutters? If you're an abutter, like.
If you say your address and it's not an abutter, we're going to move on for now. We just, and I would ask that others put their comments in the chat so we can keep moving forward, as there are a lot of raised hands.
Yeah, Maxine.
Hi, good morning. My name's Maxence. I'm a few streets away, so I'm not an immediate, like Sophia is, though I can defer.
Keep your comment brief, keep your comment brief.
Okay, great. I actually just wanted to read something I already posted, but I want to thank Rec Tyler for her thoughtful comments on what she shared, for asking for deferral because this is residential zone property. I also want to reiterate that the partnerships have also changed. And so as we continue to have an unfolding of partnerships that back out or renew, that makes it unsustainable for the residents to have to continually deal with, especially if this is not successful. We are not, I am not against a birthing center, as I've also shared in the past with the proponents. It's just that this is not the right location. I noticed in their current renderings, it appears that the current driveway has now expanded three times what it is. And so that leaves the abutters who need somewhere to park because they do not have a driveway on this very narrow street, even more challenges to try to park if this were to go forward. So with all due respect, the process is not complete because they have not gone through a meeting with the RNC. Thank you.
Excellent. Priyama?
Hello, my name is Priyama Varwa. I live on 41 Winthrop Street, and I've been a homeowner here since 2021. I'm strongly opposed to this project for various reasons, and I agree with all the points made so far. I'm particularly concerned about the congestion that has been mentioned already. The reason for that is this neighborhood and these roads have a lot of one-way roads, which make it very difficult, especially given the school, which is right next to the project in question, as well as the four churches and street. I'm concerned that with the increase in traffic, I live on the corner of Winthrop, Greenville, and Cleveland Street, and I get to see a lot of very fast traffic, people driving in wrong directions. And I'm concerned that with the increase in traffic, it'll be an additional danger to the neighborhood and the people that live here, especially the schoolchildren that go there. This is especially true for when there are events, as mentioned by the commercial building, that might cause additional traffic to come into this area.
Thank you.
Okay, then just, we keep going?
I'll hear from maybe three more. If others want to put your chat response and your feedback in the comments.
Okay, Peaches? Peaches, I sent a request to you.
Good morning.
Yes, please proceed with your name, address.
Good morning, my name is Peaches Jackson. Thank you for allowing me to express why I support the birthing center. Roxbury deserves a birthing center, one that prioritized the health, the dignity, and well-being of our residents. For far too long, the neighborhood has been underserved in terms of maternal and infant care, particularly for black and brown families who face higher risk due to systemic healthcare disparities. This birth center is not just about providing medical care, it's about addressing the longstanding inequalities and ensuring that families have access to high-quality community center support they deserve. The birth center will be a resource for everyone. It will be designed to serve individuals from all backgrounds and circumstances. Our goal is to create a space where no one is left behind, where expected parents feel empowered, supported, and safe throughout their birthing experiences. Roxbury families should not have to travel far or struggle to find cultural, competent, accessible care. That's why we are building a birth center that reflects the values and needs of the entire community, ensuring that every parent and every child has the best possible start. It is conveniently located near public transportation and medical facilities. The birth center will be a lifeline for local families, reducing barriers to care and restricting the health of the community. This is more than a healthcare facility. It is a commitment to equity and power and the well-being of future generations. It is a perfect fit to serve Roxbury. And thank you.
Carl?
Good morning. My name is Carl Tedesco. I live at 16 Winthrop Street. I've been a resident here for 25 years. Just for a matter of making comments quick, I know you've heard a lot of the comments that the neighbors are opposed to, so I don't want to repeat them. But being a very historic neighborhood, I would like to see it continue as being a neighborhood housing and not turn into an office park, which seems like they want to take our neighborhood, open the door, and start turning it into offices. That is not acceptable to residents here and my neighbors who have taken great pride in their homes. And just, I'm going to add one other fact that has not been brought up yet. The house on Kearsage Street was built in 1835. It's very historic because when the Roxbury Latin School was across the street where the Day and Evening Academy is, Dr. Joseph Warren was living in that house. And he was the physician that performed surgery by the first surgery under anesthesia, and that's why we have the Etherdome at Mass General. The house was designed by Richard Bond, a noted architect. The same architect that designed the house in Fort Hill, which was the Hampden House, that the neighborhood in Fort Hill was able to designate that as a national historic landmark. I would like the council to take this into consideration. If Fort Hill can turn a home into a landmark, why can't we have a landmark presented in our neighborhood also?
Thank you. I'll take one more, and let's give the applicant a chance to respond.
Okay, that was the last of the hands.
Okay, so let's turn it back to the applicant. There was a lot of comments and concerns about process and all that. Just if you could briefly respond, that would be great.
Sure, I can't see anyone anymore, so I'll go first. This is Nishara, and if you may, Dave, I'll let you take that last one. I want to just speak to process. We have met the community process as outlined by ONS. There is a lot of support that was not provided in the testimony that Jeremy Bembry offered from the city. We have the support of 60 abutters. Those are addresses that we collected from the city in the 300-foot radius surrounding the property. To the comment about sustainability, City Life Vita Urbana moved out of the property when it made the commitment to downsize. So it's not that the partnership is not strong or fragile. It's in fact that when we heard that community feedback and cut the building in half, they needed the largest footprint, and they decided to move to another location. We have raised all of the funds that we need to build the project without carrying significant debt. And the birth center, to the point of Representative Tyler, will be fully funded by insurance, fully reimbursed, excuse me, by insurance, and will be fully accessible to families in the Commonwealth on both commercial insurance and on mass health. So there will not be a cost paid by families to access care at the birth center. I could go on, but I'll defer to you to speak on history. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to comment on some of the issues around traffic and volume and this idea that we are eliminating parking. None of these are true. We're, we are locating our drive where an existing curb cut is. We are providing off-street parking. And the reality is that this project would be far less dense than any residential project to be built on the site. So we believe this is far less of an impact on the community than if a developer were to rebuild residential buildings here. As we've noted earlier in the presentation, neither of these structures are on the historic register. However, we acknowledge the board member's comment about the neighborhood being in a historic. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, it was very important to hear all the comments on supporting the position to this project, thinking about the neighborhood and the long-term impact on the community. I'm going to make a motion of approval with a proviso that they need the sign from the Boston Landmark Commission.
Is there a second?
I will second. I think reading the BPD report that, you know, Plan Nubian in the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan contemplates these uses and recommends them for approval. I think the variances requested are, you know, few compared to some of the other items we see. You know, the front yard insufficient, it looks to be, you know, not out of alignment with the remainder of the neighborhood. The clinic use and the office use and the community center use are all needing variances. And, you know, I think I'm happy to support them.
Mr. Stemberger?
I'm going to vote yes. My concern is still with some of the neighborhood feedback that needs to be heard that may be, that may help, may not. But if we get added proviso, if a proviso could be added, that some amount of community feedback for some time be added. But I will vote yes.
Are you asking for additional meetings? That additional meetings take place, or what's the?
Yes, that would be my ask at this point. Or if, but, so I don't know if that would go along with what's been presented or recommended or not.
Well, I'll let Mr. Valencia decide on that. Says you made the motion.
Yes, so the proviso is to, for the proponent to continue working with the community and incorporate in community feedback to improve the project.
Okay, I'll continue on then. So Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
I'm voting yes, but I would like some guidance from the legal department on that proviso to add more meetings and whether that is enforceable and what that would look like.
Yeah, so they could just put continued, I think how, remember Valencia worded it, continued community, you could do updates. But in terms of like the project itself, like what's being approved is what's presented today and stamped by us. But you could, you're still able to add with continued community updates.
Ms. Beter Brazza?
I'm going to go, you know, to have Representative Tyler on the call to voice the concern that, that more kind of community input was just needed. I always find, it's a very commendable project, but I always find that if there, if your abutters are still voicing that there needs to be outreach, whether it was to the neighborhood, associations, community, that there needs to be a little bit more outreach. I think the project can be reviewed with the community within two weeks and come before us to present those kind of conversations in regards to partners for the project to make sure that it's successful. I do agree that the project type is actually pretty appropriate. That whole street is both residential and larger type of use in regards to zoning. I'm going to vote no.
The chair also votes no, the motion does not carry. Is there another?
I'd like to put forward a motion. I'd like to put forward a motion of defer to ensure that the applicant reaches out to Roxbury Neighborhood Associations that felt needed them at the table again, to ensure to Representative Tyler that you have the correct partners to make this a successful community project. And for the reasons I'm putting forward a deferral, to come back in two weeks.
I'm not actually sure that's sufficient time to go back to the community, but we can certainly.
Yeah, if we can talk to the applicant, whether two weeks is sufficient time to have meetings with the community, I would advocate for that because it is a very commendable project. I just want to make sure that it's vetted one more time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberger?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Beter Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Just to clarify on record for the date for the deferral, we could do February 25th or March 25th.
I will ask the applicant how much time you think you need for additional process.
Madam Chair, if I may, we would request a deferral to February 25th. But in the event that we're unable to organize a meeting between now and then, then we would pursue a deferral to March if the board would agree with that.
If we see, when we see you then. If we see, when we see you then, it would be what's available if you have to defer again, so.
Understood, madam.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion? I mean, sorry, yeah, sorry, we had a motion. You have the dates, you have the dates. So we're gonna go for the 25th of February. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1682064 with the address of 570 Warren Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address of 51 Dobson Road. With me today is the architect, Trilla Ray of Joy Street Design. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to combine lots and to install our new handicap ramp. This project was before you, before, and we received approvals for the lot combination and the use that was requested at the time. We are not changing the site plan. That was approved by this, by this board at the last hearing. We are confirming the old drawings and the site plan to reflect the new one, which represents one lot and the installation of the handicap ramp. The old plan showed a lift at the site with regard to accessibility and we are doing a handicap ramp at the site at this time. Again, we are just cleaning up the records with regard to the lot consolidation, which was approved by this board last time we were here. And we are going to a handicap ramp instead of a lift. With regard to the lot combination, the lot combination, the lot size and the area of the lot will be 12,500 square. And we have Trilla LaRay of Joy Street Design on to answer any questions that the board may have with regard to the site plan.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted only of a notification from the Office of Neighborhood Services notifying abutters of the proposal as we did not feel the proposal required a full community process. I will receive now the letters of support or opposition or any concern from abutters at this time. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we also met with Project Right, who have submitted a letter of support for this project as well.
I see Stefan Donovan and Stefan Wilkins. Either one of you can start.
Hi, yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Stephen Donovan. I'm a Housing Development Officer with the City of Boston Mayor's Office of Housing. The Mayor's Office of Housing, in partnership with the Neighborhood Housing Trust, is in support of this project and is also providing funding for Commonwealth Land Trust's improvement of the property at 570 Warren Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Wilkins?
Yes, my name is Steve Wilkins from the Commonwealth Land Trust and we really appreciate your support on being able to continue on with this project. Thank you.
I have no additional ways to say this moment. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion of approval. Madam Chair, I think, I think BTD also made a recommendation, if that can be read from the record.
Do you, if you have it in front of you, can you read it?
Yeah, so it was the Boston Transportation Department stated that we should approve the six spaces, but with one being accessible.
Yep, it's not a problem.
Okay, great.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that one be accessible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
In the next five cases brought to us in conjunction with the Mayor's Office of Housing, there are five companion cases. I'll read them all in at the same time and then we can examine them based on that. Case BOA 1681301 with the address of 65 Baloo Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1681304 with the address of 71 Baloo Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1681313 with the address of 85 Selden Street. Next, we have case BOA 1681315 with the address of 106 Selden Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1681309 with the address of 80 Selden Street. Would the applicant and/or their representative please explain the case more?
Sure, so Matt Lawler speaking for the applicant on these matters. I wanted to just check, is it possible to group these into two parts? So the two Baloo sites as one set?
Yeah.
And the Selden sites as a second? Is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then also just wanted to check if there are any recusals for these.
Doesn't appear so.
Okay, we were, perhaps expecting Member Brazza to do so.
Oh, is, is one of the, is, can you explain why? I might have not seen it. Why would I recuse myself as, yeah, can you state further record? Why would I recuse myself?
My understanding that there are other matters for the development team, not these matters on which you are the architect.
Can you say it again?
I understood that there are matters, other matters, not these, not these five, for which you are the architect.
I'm not an architect for 65 Baloo.
What, you're not, you're not, no, I know. I'm saying you're not on any of these five. You're not the architect for them. But I understood that on other projects for this development team, you are, not before the board today.
Is, is the developer a current client of mine? That's how I would recuse myself.
Right, that would be my understanding. If they're not, then, then you don't, then you would not need to recuse yourself. I'm sorry.
I typically recuse myself for projects where I have an invested interest on the project. It might not appear in front of me if, on the development team, if I have a client of mine currently in my office, I would definitely need to recuse myself. So that's why this is public record.
Got it.
In this project, do I have, is there a client that is part of the development team?
So.
That has not made it so obvious in front of me?
Got it. I don't know if Marie Morissette from the development team wants to speak to that, but if you are not currently.
So Marie is part of this development? Okay, then thank you for pointing that. I would need to recuse myself. Chair Dong, I was not aware of this in, in front of me.
Understood, so we are.
Yeah, thank you so mu, thank you so much, Attorney Law Lawler, for making that very obvious. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Great.
Okay, so just to be clear, we are now a five-member board.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And sorry, sorry for that, that bit of awkwardness there. But yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
That's, that's fine.
No, it's always better to be in public record and I stand behind that. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Okay, so we are, so we understand we're a five-member board so we can't lose any of you, but we will do our best to get you all. So yeah, so I'm, I'm joined this morning by Marie Morissette from the development team, as well as Jonah Manigat from Hierarchy Design Collaborative, who are the project designers. I'll speak very briefly for the first two for the Baloo sites and then I'll turn it over to Marie and then Jonah will present the design. So as described in the appeal filings and as shown in the plans, these appeals relate to vacant parcels of land owned by the City of Boston and located at 65 Baloo and 71 Baloo in Matapan for the proposed construction of one three-story multifamily residential structure that will contain three residential units and three tandem parking spaces on each of the two parcels. So it's two parcels, two buildings, two, three families with three tandem spaces. Each of the proposed projects is 100% affordable with a total of one unit affordable to households earning up to 80% of area median income and two units affordable to households making up to 100% of AMI. All units are homeownership units. Mayor's Office of Housing designated the proponent as the developer for the subject properties under the Welcome Home Boston Phase Two program, which is designed to leverage city-owned vacant properties to provide new affordable homeownership opportunities within the city. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Marie Morissette from the development team to give a bit more context about the projects. Thanks.
Good morning, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, I'm just sharing my screen real quickly. So this project is a partnership with Mass Five, which is a local minority-owned general contractor, as well as with the Visionary Investors Building Equity. Myself, I am one of the principal managing partners of Five. And at the end of, at the, in 2023, we, as part of the Welcome Home Boston program with the city, with the Mayor's Office of Housing, we were designated as a developers for these sites, which looks to bring more affordability, more housing to the community. Specifically, as our Matt mentioned, we're looking at two vacant lots with one abutter in the middle that's looking to bring a family-sized homes, three bedrooms and two units, which through community meetings, we've gotten feedback from the community that they wanted to see, see. So we're happy to do that. Over the past year, we have been working very closely with the city's design team, as well as our own architect, which will speak more to design mechanics of, of the building. But I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out that this project here is very much in, in alignment with the city's housing production goals, as well as the state. We're receiving both subsidy from the city as well as the state, which have supported this project. And we look forward to bringing it to the community. We have been in discussion with the community. We've gotten letters of support, which, Madam Chair, I hope you have with you today. And we're looking forward to hearing approval for us to move these two projects forward.
Thank you.
I think Jonah, you should be able to proceed.
Great, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jonah Manigat. I'm one of the architects working with the vibe teams on this project. I think I'll just speak to these two buildings together because essentially they are twin buildings. They are two, they are three-story buildings with A-frame, A-frame shape that are basically infield buildings. And we tried to either to research a discussion with folks in neighborhoods, just trying to replace what was in the building, on the, on the, on the street prior. And so basically we play here, we creating the street wall. These are very street-forward buildings. I don't know if somebody can scroll up and kind of show the elevations. But basically, we are talking about buildings with three bedrooms on the first and second floors and two bedrooms on the, on the upper floor, and a kind of an adding area. We are providing three tandem parking spaces. It's a very tight site, so it was not possible for us to actually provide three parking spaces, but we are providing enough of a driveway that would allow for three parking spaces kind of to not burden the street. But essentially, this is a very street-forward, Boston-type A-frame building that, that contain the family housing units that will kind of, kind of support maybe the mayor's goal of providing more affordable housing. So I think somewhere on the slide, somebody can just keep scrolling up. You probably see the elevation. If anybody has any questions, but I'm, I'm free to answer any questions anybody may have on the design or anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a, I have a small question. Maybe I misunderstood. Did, did you guys said you have a minority contractor already?
Hi, yeah, that was me. So our contractor was, we've, we've partnered together as developer GC on the project. And so when we put out the approval, this is a joint, a joint venture with Mass Construction and, and Visionary Investors Building Equity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This town, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judge of this board. This went through an MOH-led community process involving feedback from abutters, as well as they were in contact with, I believe, the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association. I guess the civic had expressed some concerns regarding the density being proposed, but was pleased about the affordability aspect of this project. And it sounds like the applicant continued to work with that civic. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then Madam, okay, does that come up? Bob, are you looking to get testimony here?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, D'Amico BTD. Unless I'm mistaken and missed something, I saw two parking spaces reflected on the plan, not three, as being asked for. I don't know if I missed something, but that's what I, what I saw. And secondly, the, the parking space closest to the street is only eight foot seven inches wide. And we normally require eight and a half feet. And with only an inch to spare on each side, it would be kind of difficult to, to get out of the vehicle. So I don't know how to cure that, but I would like to go on record with those two issues, the two cars shown on the plan and the space closer to the street being only eight foot seven inches wide. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to the parking question before we proceed?
Sure, Marie or Jonah, do you want to speak to the?
Sure, I could speak to that if allowed. The, I think, if somebody can pull up the, the site plan where you saw the eight foot seven, but I, I believe we have.
I think it's just two cars as shown.
Okay, but I think the driveway, the driveway itself is going to be 10 feet wide. That's, that's, that's the driveway that will allow, that will allow for the, for the, for the cars to, to drive in and being able to get out of it. As far as the, the two cars being shown, I think initially we were showing a driveway that was only long enough for two cars. But after hearing community meeting feedback, we have extended the driveway to allow for three parking cars to be able to park. So that may not be reflected at the time of the submission to, to the CBA, but that is the intention to actually extend the driveway in order for it to be, to be able to accommodate three cars, tandem. Thank you.
I believe all of the updated plans were submitted. You know, it might just, they're all in with the record. So I, I don't know if it's just on a different page or something else, but I do know that that was with, after community feedback.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, right there. You see that? That's probably a little.
Very good, thank you.
There we go, yeah, so I know that they were. Thank you.
All right. Any, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with planning department review. Special attention to.
Sorry.
Special attention to reviewing the parking situation to improve parking configuration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we're ready then to proceed to the, to the three sites on Selden.
Please do.
So I guess, but yeah, if we can, so I guess start with, start with whichever one was the first here. But I think, are the plans all at the end or are they, are they spread throughout, sorry? In, in terms of the presentation? Just for Jonah's benefit.
I'm sorry, are you asking to open? Yeah, can we?
Go ahead and open the first one, I suppose. I'm guessing that they're all different, okay.
Thanks.
All right, so Jonah, it'll be three sets. So once, once you're done with one, go on to the next one. But again, Matt Lohmer, Robinson Nicole, one Boston place, But again, Matt Wollman, Robinson, Nicole, one Boston Place, attorney for the applicant. Once again, Marie Morrisette is the Mass Five representative for the developer. And Jonah Manigat is here for the architects. I'm not sure, Marie, you want to say anything in particular about the Selden sites first?
Yeah, no, the Selden sites, so there's three parcels on this site, as with the other one, very active on 85 Selden. We're direct aboard butters to a school. We've been working with the principal. And that site, I will just mention that we actually, to provide some accessibility in the rear as opposed to the front, we did present it to the accessibility board. Our request was granted, which you should see that in the records. I think that's the only thing I wanted to add on this site, but otherwise, with the same objective to provide family-size units, affordable rate. We're looking at the 80% and 100% AMI levels. And we're excited to bring these units to the community.
And I'll just, real quick, that 80 Selden has six units, right?
Yeah, six units.
Yep, and then 85 and 106 are three each. Same level of affordability for each. Sorry, Jonah.
I just want to clarify a small mix-up. 106 is the six-unit unit, 80 is the three.
106.
Yeah.
Sorry, my fault.
No, it's okay. This is the six-unit unit right here, 106. Okay, if it's okay for me, I can just jump into the design.
Yes, please.
The sight plan we're looking at right now is the six-unit building. While we try to do, Madam Chair, members of the board, we try to be very conservative in our approach. We try to bring buildings that fit the street. And when next to it, we have a very similar building. So we're trying to replicate that in terms of scale and look. So this will be a six-unit building where the, kind of divided in half, with basically two, three families divided by a party wall. On the first floor, we'll have a two-bedroom ADA unit. And on the other upper floors, we'll have three-bedroom units. Very contextual for the neighborhood. And we are also providing six parking spaces for the six units. Thank you.
Do you want to pull up the other two plans briefly and go through them?
Yeah, if somebody can just bring in the 85 or 80, I can speak to those as well, very quickly. Okay, this is 80 Selden, which is another infill building. Again, another conservative approach. We're proposing a flat roof, three-family building that is very similar to the street. We are providing three parking spaces with the first floor being ADA accessible and three bedrooms on each floor. And we can talk about 85 next. This is basically the look of the building. It's very typical of a three-day car you see in the city of Boston.
Okay, we can move on to 85?
Yeah, we can move on to 85.
Yep, thanks.
Very good. 85 is a building that's very similar to what you have seen on the Balloon sites. The only issue with 85 is we had a very steep grade. I mean, almost very, I would say impossible to actually provide ADA access to the front of the building. And we did go to the MAAB to make our case, and we were granted a variance. But we have made sure that while we were not able to make the front door accessible, we've made the rear door accessible. So the person driving into the parking in the back could still access the building in the wheelchair if needed. And that unit itself is made accessible. So we have made those arrangements to at least mitigate the issue with the grading. And again, it's an A-frame building with a two-bedroom on the first floor, sorry, three bedrooms on the first floor, three bedrooms on the second floor, and then two bedrooms in the attic area, third floor. So very contextual to the neighborhood. I'm open to any questions, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Hampton, are you available? I don't know, Gene's comment is that there are no plans attached for 85 Selden, so I just want to confirm that you've seen them. Is Mr. Hampton with us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yep, I'm here. Sorry, little delay. Yes, we have copies of the plans here. We're in support of this. I think on our recommendation, I think we have approval with design review.
Thank you. We'll open it up. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the mayor's office is deferred to the judge of this board. As in the project before, this went through an MOH-led community process involving notices going out to neighbors and soliciting feedback on the design and what would be the merits of the project. They did connect with the local civic association, we understand, and have worked to adapt the project. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Hold on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Abdaal Beckett from Councilor Ben Arrows' office. I would just like to go on. Not all of these parcels are in our district, but most of them are. I believe 85 and that. But we would like to go on record in support of the projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, I see your hand raised. You looking at the testimony here?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, members of board, good morning. This is Diana Bracha from Councilor Papan's office. We, the council, would like to go on record that he is in support of 85 Selden, which we thought was in our district. It actually isn't, but we are in support of that regardless because we do believe that these plans came from very thoughtful review, design, and through community engagement.
Thank you. We have no additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with planning department review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. And good luck. Due to the time, we'll take a four-minute break and come back at 11:30. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Ms. Bede Brazza.
Present.
Your is Mr. Stembbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start off by reminding people that we are six-member board today. And next, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferral from the 11:30 conference.
Yes, hi, this is Andrew Melton-Freire for 36 Akron Street, Boston. I'd like to defer.
If I thought I had it, yeah. Well, not in that sense.
For instance.
That would be regarding through case BOA 1591933 with the address of 36 Akron Street. Could you go ahead and explain for us?
Yes, we have an upcoming second Butters meeting next week. So we thought it would be judicious to wait until after that meeting.
Okay. Caroline?
We could do February 25th or March 25th?
Let's try February 25th, please.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to my... I'm sorry, I make a motion to defer to February 25th.
Do a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries to you then.
Thank you.
Further request for withdrawal, want to defer, want to defer? Hearing none, move on then to the re-discussion scheduled for 11:30 a.m. And we have case BOA 1671922 with the address of 303 Dummit Street. I believe we have Attorney Small with us.
Yes, we do. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small. I'm a business dresser at 51 Dobson Road. Today, we're here seeking relief to change the occupancy of the building to include the restaurant with takeout and outdoor seating in the rear. The restaurant already exists, Santa Fe Burrito Grill. And we were here last time when they got the approval for the restaurant, but they did not add the takeout use, so that's in the outdoor seating. That's what we're here to do today. The zoning sub-district here is the new EBR 3. Under the... We applied for this prior to the new zoning taking effect in East Boston. Under the new EBR 3, this isn't allowed use. But because we preceded the new zoning, we were cited for extension of non-conforming use. Again, the violation now is allowed under the new EBR 3 in East Boston. The hours of operation for the restaurant are from 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. And we have proposing seating, outdoor seating in the rear on the patio for about 15 to 20 patrons. I can stop there and answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Some back information in the community process. A Butters meeting was held on June 12th where there were three constituents in attendance. Primary feedback from the meeting was the owner of the restaurant is receptive to the neighbors and is committed to working well with them. There was some concerns regarding noise, potential noise in the patio from a rear Butter. But as mentioned, the applicant pledged to work with that neighbor and address those concerns. They met several times with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association over the past fall. We're unaware of any further concerns at this time, and with that, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
We have no raised hands at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion of approval.
Do a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1575584 with the address of 81 Lexington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Forest Road in Braintree. Here today on behalf of the owner, Allison McHale, for 81 Lexington Street. The proposal before you today is to raise the existing structure and erect a new three-and-a-half-story, seven-unit residential building. This project was filed well before Plan East Boston. However, through the process and delays, we... The original building was not designed in accordance with Plan East Boston. As we went through the community process, we went and revised the building. We originally had a much larger building with more units. And we tried to make the project adhere to the intent of Plan East Boston. Next slide, please. Okay. Let's see my plans on file. So basically, the proposal is for a three-and-a-half-story residential building. The relief that we are seeking is for the number of units. The use itself is six is required, and we are proposing seven. The maximum building height is required to be three stories in this district. We are proposing three and a half. And then, the maximum building width is allowed to be 50 feet, and we have 68 feet of width in our building. And then, for the requirement for parking would be seven spaces, one-to-one. Due to the site constraints, we have an L-shaped lot which is rather narrow. We were not able to accommodate any parking. As we went through the community process, we did revise the building to get it as close to compliant as we could, including meeting all of the setbacks in Plan East Boston, as well as the floor, lot coverage and maximum floor plate sizes. However, we are over on the proposed unit count, the half of a story and the 68 feet of width of the building. The... In the current climate, we... I sat very closely with my client, the owner, Allison McHale, who's owned this property for a long time, and has been working on the development for over five years. In that time, her husband was deployed, she was married and, I mean, had children. And so, we've been working to develop the project. We met with the civic association. We heard their concerns about the aesthetic design of the building. And we tried to bring a project that was more in line with the intent of Plan East Boston. But that was also economically feasible with the current time constraints, interest rates and construction costs being what they are. After meeting with several contractors to price what we thought was a proposed building, we opted to go with the seven-unit and seek the relief on the half-story and the additional unit. And with the parking and the site constraints, there was just no way to really accommodate that.
Ms. Bede Brazza, have you reviewed the plans?
The plans that I reviewed were submitted in December. Has there been any updates? It wasn't on this last batch, but I do have one from...
The last set of plans that I submitted was to ISD for the re-review in early November. And I've been trying to track that down with special services, but I've had no luck.
And Mr. Hampton? Can you comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City Boston Planning Department. We haven't seen plans that shows seven units. As you saw in our recommendation, everything's based on the eight. That is in the description on the agenda.
And I would say again for the record that those plans were submitted in November. And I've reached out to ISD several times, to the Plans Examiner, to try to establish the status, including this morning and yesterday, and received no response.
So, Mr. Hampton, the drawings that I have in front of me says that it was reviewed by the ZBA on 2/27/24. And I feel like we've been through this already.
By the ZBA?
The plans that I have says from 2/27/24 from last year. And...
We got those plans from that...
And I have it uploaded in my portal from 9/23/24 and 12/324. So for some reason, we're not getting the most updated plans, if that's what Mr. Christopher is saying.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what Mr. Christopher is saying, but whether or not ISD has completed their review on something and then been sent to us, I don't know. I can't speak for them. I know they're extremely busy. But, you know, even just in our first, you know, sentences that we haven't been provided with new updated plans that show the seven.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we cannot make an intelligent decision today because we don't have accurate plans. So according to Mr. Clark from ISD, the Plans Examiner has not reviewed the newest set of plans submitted in December. So I don't know if we don't have new plans. But, Mr. Christopher, I'll ask you to work directly with ISD to fix that.
I have attempted since November. I will continue.
Yeah, maybe Stephanie, is there a way that you can help the applicant? Because I think they've been in front of us twice already with this issue.
That's correct.
I recall. So Stephanie, is there a way that you can help Mr. Christopher get in touch with their Plan Examiner? To make sure we have the right files?
Hi, this is Stephanie from the ZBA. The plans were submitted to the Plans Examiner to review. We just have not received them back from the Plans Examiner. They were submitted in November.
Okay, so...
I guess in light of this information, if we could request a brief administrative deferral to get these plans into the appropriate hands and progress this project.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to deferral for this applicant, but also encourage Stephanie to reach out and help Mr. Christopher, since he's been at it since November. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Caroline, give a date for Mr. Christopher?
We could do February 25th or March 25th?
I think February 25th should be sufficient.
All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Moving on then to case BOA 1611821 with the address of 2 Brook Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain?
Is Mr. Basuzan on? Do you see any raised hand, Jessica? Okay, I'm gonna suggest we move on and circle back if this applicant shows up.
We will do that, Madam Chair. So that takes us to case BOA 1622743 with the address of 8 to 8A Hudson Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Marancy. Business address of 168 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the project architect, Bonnie Ton. Madam Chair, would you like to address the G-Cod first?
Sure.
Both letters of no harm and compliance were submitted to Boston Water and Sewer. I'm not quite sure if Christian Simonelli is here, that he can attest to that.
Yes, Ryan, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the group, good morning. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you, Christian. The proposal in front of us today is to combine two vacant parcels and erect a new six-story building with a restaurant on the first and second floor and eight residential units on floors three to six. All will consist of a two-bedroom, two-bath. This site is located within Chinatown in the core commercial area between England Street and Beach Street. It also abuts the Rose Kennedy Greenway to its rear and is one parcel away from Sohu Park and the Chinatown Gate. The Chinatown and Tufts Medical Center, MBTA orange line stops are within one-quarter of a mile and a half a mile of South Station. Given this proximity to transit and the very similar condition of surrounding buildings with no off-street parking, we feel it's appropriate to not include parking for the residential units. First and second floor restaurants with residential units on the upper floors are consistent within this neighborhood. The ongoing Chinatown rezoning efforts has identified this site with a proposed community commercial area where there is a high concentration on Chinese cultural shops and restaurants while allowing these types of businesses to operate on the upper floors of the buildings. Also, another goal of the Chinatown rezoning is to allow more housing development, which was highlighted with the adopted plan downtown 2023. There are several related variances we are seeking relief for today. Takeout restaurants are conditional on the first and second floors within this sub-district of the historic Chinatown Protection Area. The site is also located within the Greenway Overlay District per Article 49A, which is also a conditional use for uses with priority Greenway frontages located on the ground level. Further, we would like to mention the refusal letter incorrectly states that the violation is forbidden. Given the prominence of the restaurants that include takeout in this area and that the neighborhood is considered walkable, takeout is an appropriate use. Lastly, the project was cited for insufficient parking as the code requires .3 of a parking space per a new unit of housing. As previously mentioned, this proposal is aligned with many other mixed uses in the neighborhood, which also do not offer parking considering the close proximity of public transit. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm gonna pause and turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Some back information in the community process. ONS had hosted a Butters meeting where no opposition was expressed. The applicant went on to meet with both the Chinatown Neighborhood Council and the Chinatown Residents Association. These civic associations did not weigh in, providing neither opposition nor support. We're unaware of any further concerns. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Jessica?
Sorry about that. Yeah. So...
Hi, can you hear me?
Okay, so this is Counselor Flynn's office. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sydney, I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. Please note that Counselor Flynn had previously asked for a deferral so that the family association and proponent could work out internal discussions on the project, as well as working with residents on quality of life issues. Counselor Flynn would like to relay feedback from the Chinatown Residents Association on being mindful of continued use of the park and sunlight, affordability and ground floor use. In particular, Counselor Flynn would also like to emphasize concerns from CRA and the neighbors when it comes to Airbnb and compliance with the city's short-term rental ordinance. He respectfully asks that the proponent continue working with the neighbors on these quality of life concerns. Thank you.
And we have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Right, Madam Chair, I see that the project is on the G-Cod area, meaning that it needs parlay review by the Boston Water and Sewer. I'm wondering if there was a no harm there.
He already spoke to that.
That it, okay.
And Simonelli already...
Sorry, I was busy then.
That's okay. Any other questions? May I have a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval and that the plans be reviewed by the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Great, thank you.
On to case BOA 1542657 with the address of 548 East 3rd Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hi, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross, Attorney of the Law for Prince L. Bell at One International Place. This matter was before the board December 3rd and was denied without prejudice on account of the building's massing and parking. The latest plan, which I think will be pulled up here, reduces the massing as well as the parking. It further complies with the directive of the Boston Planning Memo and is in line with recent nearby approvals. Madam Ambassador, you can stay on the survey page that you were just on. Right here, yeah. Go up just a little bit more if you don't mind, please. Thank you. The main difference between this plan is increasing the rear yard setback by doubling it. Now, this shallow lot has a 10.2 rear yard setback. And that then creates more than doubling of the open space along with additional balconies to go from 212 square feet to 474 square feet. Next slide, please. On this cover page here, the massing, you can see... It's worth pointing out that how they differ from previously. The first floor has been reduced from 947 square feet to 693 square feet. The second and third floors have been reduced from 976 square feet to 902 square feet. And the fourth floor has been reduced from 827 square feet to 594 square feet. So the total floor area has been reduced by 635 square feet, which results in a FAR going from 2.9 to 2.4. The next pages, A1 and A2, show the floor plans for the floors per second, third and fourth. Beginning with that slide, A1, on the left, which is the first floor plan, that was originally the parking area, if you recall from the last plan. It's now been converted to living space. It's a 693-square-foot bedroom with one bath and provides outdoor ground floor area in the rear. The second floor plan in the middle shows a 902-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bath with a 100-square-foot deck off the rear. And the third floor and fourth are now a three-bedroom, two-bath duplex with two rows of decks, including the upper deck, which, if you go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, which completely removes the corner massing in the middle there, you see, for that, for the structure. There's also a nine-foot setback from the building front. You can see in the middle there, not including the bay itself. And then also, on the section on the right, what you can see is that each floor has been reduced in height to result in a shorter building overall. The next slide, slide A3, page 7, right here, is the front and side elevation. So the front elevation no longer has the curb cut and parking garage. So that the width of the building is at just over 20 feet, no longer feels tight and constrained like the previous plan and some of the comments we received from the board. And then the right side elevation shows that corner deck, removing that massing from a key part of the building. And then, you can see that the overall height of the building, as shown in that elevation, is now 36 feet, 10 inches, as compared to 40 feet of the plan we showed you last, late last year. Next slide, please, A10, A4. So this shows the rear and other side elevation with the rear of the building providing the additional outdoor space for each of the units through the balconies, as well as through the increased rear yard. Madam Ambassador, if you just go back to page four, I can... There's a zoning chart there. I can quickly, Madam Chair, go through the zoning chart very quickly. The... Excuse me. The roof structure restriction remains, Article 6829, as does the lot size, 1279 and a 2,000, and as does the additional lot size per unit. The FAR site has been reduced from, as I mentioned, 2.9 to 2.4. The open space, as I mentioned, has been increased from 212 to 474. The front yard has now been a zero-lot line at the front of the property from three. And then, the side yard remained as is at .5. As I mentioned, the rear yard increased from 5 to 10. And as I mentioned, the parking is now zero. We did have two parking spaces previously. Just the final thing I'd mention is that this case is remarkably similar to 526 East 3rd Street, which is a case that appeared last week before the board. It's on the same side of our street. It's on the same block as our street. It is a smaller lot than our lot with a larger building than what we're proposing today. That lot was approved with a 2.9... That lot was approved with a 2.9 FAR versus our 2.4 with substantially less open space, only 84 square feet per dwelling compared to this proposal, which has 158 square foot per dwelling, and it also has parking. The proposal that you see today is similar, but a lesser version in pretty much every other category than what was approved last week and also supported by Boston Planning. I'll pause right there, Madam Chair, see if there's any comments.
Thank you. Just a quick question. As far as the plans, maybe it's a Jeff question, too. The recommendation notes that there have been no new plans since March, March of 2024, but it sounds like you mentioned some changes since then?
Correct, yeah. These, these are total new plans from, from just last December that we shared with you in your survey.
Thank you. On cue, Mr. Hampton.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. I know that the recommendation that you have in front of you says denial without prejudice, and that was based on plans dated April 12th of 2022. I'd like to commend the appellant in taking our criticism and recommendations based on those plans, submitting new plans. And although it doesn't say it on the record, if the board does look favorably upon this, I would like to suggest that we add design review for any approval. The appellant did some good work in addressing some of the major concerns that we had with them, so I commend them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's helpful. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This proponent underwent the community process for this proposal with an earlier version of their plans. An abutters meeting was held on January 4th of 2024, last year. Concerns were raised over the building height and other zoning violations associated with the proposal. They then presented to the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. However, the proposal that was presented to them was one with two parking spaces, so that's different than the proposal that's being presented to the board today. So we're unsure of their position on the proposal that's being presented here today. Our office received two letters of support from abutters and two letters of opposition, and with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Sydney?
Hi, Sydney from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn sent a letter to the board this morning and would like to go on record in support again based on good community process and feedback from neighbors, abutters and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. Councilor Flynn appreciates the proponent working in good faith on quality of life issues with neighbors and civic groups throughout this process, including attention to South Boston's existing parking crisis over severe iterations of this project. Councilor Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life concerns during the construction phase. Thank you.
We see no additional raise hands at the moment.
Any other questions from the board?
Sorry, we just had a raised hand come up. Do you want me to take it? I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm fine.
Okay, Nicholas, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I am. I, I just think it's a terrific project. I live in South Boston. I've been living in South for 20 years. And I think the additional, the 8,600 square feet of, of ground floor community space for parents and seniors is absolutely terrific. The park with all the trees and 35-plus portable housing makes sure that, you know, that people could actually afford to live in this wonderful neighborhood. The cafe and, and the community space, most of these things really help foster community along with the shared workspace. And I also noticed that the building is setback, and so that should appease, you know, those that were worried about height. And so I give a strong approval for this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Donna Brown, are you looking to give testimony here as well?
Hi, this is Donna Brown. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as well as another IAG member. I'm a member of the IAG, Dave Garten.
Are you referring, are you, sorry, are you talking about 295 West First Street?
Yes.
We are not on that case yet. We are on 548 East Third Street.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. We have no additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval. I think the applicant has done a lot of work on this in response to our comments and the PPD's comments, so I will put forward a motion of approval with design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
No. Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Next, we have case BOA 1649361 with the address of 58 Baxter Street. If the, um, and I, well, if the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Forbes Road. I'm joined today by the project attorney, Matthew Eckel. I'm going to turn it over to Matt for a brief introduction.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. As mentioned, Attorney Matt Eckel from Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. What we're proposing this morning is to combine two lots and erect a new residential building with a total of six units and four parking spaces. We also have a bike storage room included, which Mr. Christopher can detail and in greater detail as we go through the plans. All told, we're proposing approximately 5,700 square feet of gross square footage on a lot of just over 3,000 square feet. This zoning district is an MFR district. We're proposing to have two-bedroom units with rear decks to provide some open space. We are not proposing any roof decks on this project. On the first floor, we're proposing a lobby as well as the bike storage that I mentioned, and then the four interior parking spaces. And then we're proposing two units per floors two through four, all approximately 925 square feet. That, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Christopher briefly if he wants to walk through the floor plans in greater detail.
Thanks, Matt. If you could just go to the A drawings, those are the proposed floor plans. Ah, perfect. So the, the, the building is accessed by an existing curb cut, will house four parking spaces at grade. As Matt mentioned, a bike storage room, a lift, and a mail, unpacked mailboxes at the residential level at grade with a partial basement at the front right of the building for mechanical and sprinkler space. The, we had a good community process on this project. The only concern was one of our earlier iterations showed a, an incorrect side yard setback on the left side. We met and spoke with that abutter directly and clarified that this is a three-foot side yard setback. If we go down to the next slide. We illustrate here on this slide, his major concern is that none of our windows lined it up, excuse me, lined up with the abutting building windows. So we just made sure of that condition here. The, the units are all typical. They repeat. There's no corridors. There's a front and a rear stairwell with rear decks, no roof deck. And the rear yard setback is, that was one of the points we brought up. It goes from, it's required to be 20 feet. It goes from 13-foot one at the main face of the building down to three feet at the rear of that stairwell. However, with the now lot exception, the rear yard setback here would be 15 feet, so we're just shy of that. With that, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Madam Chair, just briefly, for the record, we did submit 12 letters of support from direct abutters on Baxter as well as from the adjacent West Seventh Street, so the board should have those on file as well. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
I'm looking at, what's your, what's your side setback? I'm looking at that carefully.
Three feet on both sides.
Three feet on both sides. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 25th of September, at which concerns were raised relating to the configuration of the curb cut, the side yard setback, and the possible loss of a mature tree in the rear of the property. There were two abutters in support of the proposal as presented. Our offices received 12 form letters of support and two letters of opposition, all of which have been forwarded to the board. The City Side Neighborhood Association and the St. Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association are both in non-opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Sydney?
Hi, Sydney from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and good faith compromises, including no roof deck. He respectfully asks that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life issues. Thank you.
Councilor Murphy's office?
Hello and good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Ambassador, for elevating me to a panelist. Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kevin O'Sullivan from Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy is in support for the reasons stated previously. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thanks, and we have no additional raise hands at the moment.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'm saying I need a motion of approval with, pending department review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA 1650690 with the address of 165D Street. I believe this is Mr. Christopher also.
It is. Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, again, my name is James Christopher of 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Forbes Road. I'm here today on behalf of Tony Patel, the petitioner and owner of 165D Street. The proposal is to construct a two-story addition to the existing one-story masonry building. Next slide, please. Next slide. This project was before the board, geez, I think it was a month ago or so, and the board asked for clarification of the rear yard setbacks, which I've done on this set. The, the, the violations as they exist as far as dimensional are pre-existing non-conformities. There's no change to the building footprint. The side yards are 2.7 feet on the left and 1.3 feet on the right. It's required to be three. They will remain that after the project. The front yard setback is, it's like six inches back now and it will remain there when we're complete. The proposed rear yard is three feet from the edge of the decks. If you go down to the, keep, next slide, please. Keep going. It's easy. It's better illustrated on the architectials. Keep going to the A drawings, please. Ah, there we go. So if you zoom in there, the, the footprint of the building remains the same. We will construct, there'll be a cantilever of about four feet on the second level and then about six feet of deck. So the question that was asked last time is what is the distance from the edge of the deck to the rear yard setback? It's about three feet, and then the decks are six feet with a, a four-foot cantilever. And that's illustrated, again, if you, if you go down to our elevations and section, you can see the, the illustration of the deck and the setback. Right there. We held a community process for this project. There weren't too many concerns. There was some concerns about the existing equipment on the building, which the current owner, Tony, has set repairmen to deal with. I believe that that issue has been resolved. I've not heard anything else about it. But those were the concerns that were presented when I presented this last month, so I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on August 28th of 2024, at which two abutters spoke in support. The only concern raised related to noise from ventilation equipment on the top of the property. The City Side Neighborhood Association is an active civic group in this area, which is in non-opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Okay, and another raise hand here, second, Sydney?
Hi, Sydney from Councilor Flynn's office here. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support. He asked that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thanks. We have no additional raise hands.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion? Is there a motion?
Go for it. Caitlin. Katie, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to put forward a motion of approval with design review with attention to the rear yard setback.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton.
Next, we have case BOA 1669854 with the address of 295 West First Street. This is an Article 80 case. Would the proponent and the and/or their representative please explain the case to the board?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Quilty Miller and Hanley at 28 State Street in Boston. I am here with the owner, proponent, Jones Street Investment Partners. Matt Frazier is their principal and is with us today. Also here with our development team, which includes PCA Architects, David Cholinsky, and of course, through the Article 80 process for this development, we also have been working closely with our landscape architect from Verden and my teammate, Ray Berumpenauer from Artico, who is also on with respect to the community programming aspects of this exciting new project. Madam Ambassador, just take you through these first slides. Obviously, I hit the first one. If you can go, there you go, to right here. Sorry, back up to the site. There we go. So 295 West Second Street, West First Street, I'm sorry. You can see in, inside the hash, the orange hash and the yellow hash, and obviously colored within orange. It is in the, at a edge location between the edge of the industrial section of the South Boston Dorchester Flats and the South, the South Boston residential neighborhood to the south as we go further up. And I'm sorry, can you, can you see this presentation?
Yeah, I lost it.
Yeah, sorry.
Who's presenting? We, we can see it.
You can. Oh, okay, there we go. Sorry. So, so very quickly, within a walk shed of the MBTA's Broadway train station, also in close proximity to the BCEC, as well as Reserve Channel. As I was saying, we are at an edge location just at the transition of the local industrial area of the flats and into the St. Vincent lower end section of South Boston proper. And these, these aspects are very much drive the design and the response of massing and setbacks that you'll see to follow. Next slide, please. So just quickly to walk you around the neighborhood. On the bottom left, you'll see the site itself. It's got unique characteristics. It's a very large site. It's currently a non-conforming industrial use. It's a crane yard. And on the upper left, you'll see the view looking down E Street. And in the right foreground, that large building is the Foundry Building. It's about 67 feet in height, for some metaphorical context for us, along with other structures. To the right is the view looking down Second Street. And as we make our way down further, up Second Street, and finally, on the right-hand corner bottom, that is the view of this industrial site from the local industrial area on the north side of First Street. Next slide, please. So we have, in support of the variance and as has been So we have, in support of the variance and as has been processed through 18 months of Article 80 and public review, we think this site is ideal for the introduction of much-needed housing, but not just housing for housing's sake, but also the opportunity to address some of the environmental challenges that have been placed on South Boston by this type of site. And also create new public realm, pedestrian safety, open space, and public programming. So we have a large, non-conforming industrial site, it's about an acre and a half, again at this transitional location. What's interesting here for zoning as well is that it fronts on three streets, so we have only one direct abut to the left of us, who we are pleased to have their support and have him on today as well. The existing site conditions, almost entirely impervious. There are massive curb cut openings throughout. There's an existing distressed single-story building and it's mostly asphalt and has a level of environmental soils contamination that is being remediated as part of the project. Next slide, please. So just quick, and you'll hear this a little bit from Dave in the next slides, what we are proposing is to introduce a building that is between four and six stories in height and would offer 236 total residential units, again, at a very large site of 1.5 acres, mix of studio, studio pluses, one-bedroom, one-bus dents, two-bedrooms, and three-bedroom units, 125 parking spaces. And as far as the project benefits go, we are very proud that we were able to get to 15% affordable in these challenging economic times. Again, this is a project that started almost two years ago, so it predates the current IDP. But we're able to deliver 35 units of income-restricted housing, which will have a huge impact on the housing needs for the city. We're also able to deliver almost 800 linear feet of new complete street sidewalks in an area that currently lacks that. And what you'll see in the presentation, almost 9,000 square feet of community space in the ground floor and almost 6,000 square feet of public open space, which we call the yard on Second, converting this industrial site. Also, as part of the Article 80 process, we listened very carefully about the need to ensure pedestrian safety on the streets at the intersection of E, Second, and First. And we will be doing raised crosswalks at both of those intersections, which will also complement this vast new open space that the project is providing. Next slide, take you very quickly through the zoning. So I mentioned that it's an industrial, non-conforming use, just inside the edge of the MFR zone, so the use is allowed. We do need relief for additional lot area for additional units at 1,000 per unit, a 64,000 square foot site. The FAR proposed is 3.5 in two. We would suggest that that is also contextually consistent and offset, as is the height, by certain responsive massing and other design and open space measures. So the required building height is 40. Our maximum is at 6911. But yet, as you'll see, on Second Street, we are four stories and then there's a portion where our open space is, where there's no structure at all. So it does vary and it is responsive and appropriate considering the fact that we have three streets surrounding the site. Also, the minimum front yard, as I indicated, we have three front yards, so we are compliant on Second Street, which is a very important value for us, especially as we intersect with the established residential neighborhood. And we need de minimis relief with respect to the other sides. And again, many of those sides also have, including E Street at the corner, no building whatsoever, so we would suggest it's mitigated by that. And finally, the side yard, which I think is similar in that sense, required at three and we're a little bit over one and a half. The next slide, please. I would like to hand it off to Dave Cholinsky to take you through the plans. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just to orient people, West First Street is at the top of the page. E Street is to the right-hand side. Around the perimeter of the site, you'll see that we're establishing a new sort of pedestrian-friendly sidewalk experience. Across the bottom of the page, along West Second Street, one of the great things about the site, despite it being a crane yard, is that there are very mature street trees. They're shown in dark green. We're going to augment that with 15 new street trees and then in the yard, we have another eight trees that we're establishing. I'll give you some views of that in a moment. All the parking for the site is accessed off First Street and is interior to the project, surrounded, I think you can see in the kind of light purple, by community space and community cafe, bike rooms, and the active lobbies. As Joe pointed out, connecting into the neighborhood, we have raised crosswalks along E Street at West First and at the intersection with West Second. Currently, E Street is a bit of a cut-through. The neighbors concerned about that and these raised crosswalks will serve as traffic mitigation and make it more pedestrian-friendly and easier to reach this small outdoor space that we're creating. Next slide, please. I'm going to walk around the site and this is a view looking to the east on West Second Street. I think you can gather that we've picked up on some of the vernacular of bays on the sort of traditional buildings. And despite the fact that the building is modern-looking, we picked up on some of the character with lap siding and window sizes. And I think you can see the four stories that abut West Second Street try to fit in with the cornices of the buildings around us and then the foundry in the distance. Next slide. And then this is a view standing at the corner of E and West Second, looking back towards the west. This is the yard. I'll show you a little bit more detailed picture of it. But you can see that the building starts at four stories on the left and then moves up five and then eventually six along West First Street. Next slide, please. Again, is a view looking south on E Street, foundry on the left, our building on the right, the new street trees. We have two lobbies, one that's along West First and one that's along West Second. And again, the more sort of formal side of the building along West First Street, which is obviously an emerging new neighborhood. We're carrying that bay character, but at a slightly different vocabulary. Next slide, please. And then this is looking the other way up West First Street, shows the condominium building, the gray one at the corner of D. Our immediate abut is an approved project at 270 West Second. And then our building in the distance, again, picking on some of the street vocabulary adjacent to us. Next slide, please. So getting back to the yard, met with members of the neighborhood. This part of South Boston has a real issue with lack of trees and heat island. And, you know, we talked about character, what this open space could be and should be. And it was very clear that having something that provided shade and passive recreation is the most welcome. And the notion of bringing some kind of a small coffee shop or cafe that could spill out into that space and serve the immediate neighborhood would be welcome. And I think you can see that we have these sitable landscape features, as well as loose tables and chairs that will be part of the cafe. Next slide. Very quickly, just the plans. We work very closely with the BPD to make sure that it feels inviting and an extension of the sidewalk and the neighborhood. The building, the community cafe, you can see there is almost 60 feet back from the curb along West Second Street. And hopefully will provide a, you know, a welcoming respite to the whole neighborhood. Next slide, please. Just very quickly, imagery of the intended community uses. Obviously, these things will evolve and the building will be populated over time, but there's a real effort to bring community uses to our ground floor at the entire perimeter. Next slide. And we work very closely with the Urban Design Group. I think these illustrate what we tried to do with the various four, five, and six-story elements of the building so that as pedestrians along West Second, despite the fact that we have six stories along West First Street, it's really not visible as a pedestrian along West Second. Next slide, please. Very quickly, give you some idea of the material of a combination of lap siding, fiber cement panels, and composite metal bays. Next slide. And again, this is just a view looking at our First Street facade with our immediate neighbor to the right, 295 West Second. The one thing I will say is our amenity spaces are, for our residents, are within the building. You'll notice on the bottom image here that we have two courtyards, so that we have private outdoor space for the residents and no roof decks, which, you know, can be somewhat troublesome at times. All our interior amenity space is controlled within the building itself. Next slide. I'm going to hand it back to Joe.
Thanks, David. Madam Chair, just briefly, I won't go through this, but I want to, on behalf of my client, thank the neighborhood, the community groups, and the elected officials, and of course, the BPDA for helping to guide this project over 18 months. We started in May of 2023, inviting the neighbors in to listen. Obviously, it's a very big site, but we think that the opportunities for the community are also significant. And so we have worked very hard through that process. Thank the IAG for their participation. And one thing I'll note, which I just think is important, is obviously, this project, should it have the approval of this board, is subject to further BPDA design review. And one of the things that we've done, Madam Chair, after our approval by the BPDA in September, was to return to the community for an in-person meeting and see if we could improve and further address some of the input that we heard with respect to the ground floor, which wouldn't change the zoning. But if you go to the next slide, I'll have David just quickly summarize that and then we'll conclude. David?
So, big picture, the request was, because we have package delivery to, you know, residents at a building like this, the request was to move our primary lobby, let's call it, which has our mail and our package room, to move it to West First Street, so that pickup and drop-off, which you see noted there, would occur along West First Street, not along West Second Street and not adjacent to the yard. So from a big-picture standpoint, that was a change in the orientation of which one is the primary versus more secondary lobby. The cafe stays the same on the yard. The community uses along West First Street remain unchanged. And the bike room is consolidated into one location.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Questions from the board?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I'm trying to understand your, I think it's like one foot five inch gap between the two buildings, two structure, and I think, am I seeing the gap kind of rendered on the A301 under view from West First Street and D Street?
It's David.
So I guess my, then as I look at the floors, then I see that there's kind of an open green space in between. So I want to understand a little bit what's behind that one, one and a half inch gap. What's going on there?
Yeah, so our building above, this is just the ground floor plan, the ground, the, at the upper level, the building sets back adjacent to our neighbor at 295. So their building is set back from the property line above and our building is set back to create a courtyard between the two buildings that's a little over 25 feet wide.
The courtyard, the courtyard is to provide light and air coming into the studio apartments.
Correct.
It says outdoor amenity. Am I assuming that there's going to be outdoor balconies from those studio?
We don't have balconies in that area. In fact, that area adjacent and matching the building adjacent to us is where we have worked out a dog-walking area on the roof of the garage. So that, again, working with the neighborhood who have a real issue with dogs over using the local parks, that's where we're going to have an internal dog-walking area.
And then in terms of the one and a half inch gap between the two structure, what is that? Explain, why wouldn't you abut the, to adjacent to the building versus having that huge gap all through?
You know, at the moment, that's really a construction, a construct, constructability issue. That building has yet to be built. And really, we, as much as anything else, we're just looking to provide some kind of coordination to allow for that building to be built at a later time.
So that's for later investigation. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you so much for that explanation.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judge from this board. Some background information, the community process. The proponent completed the BPDA community process and also independently hosted two in-person meetings with the community, first on September 11th and the second on November 19th, 2024, during which time, concerns relating to the project were discussed with residents. In response to community discussions, the proponent agreed to the relocation of the main building entry, deliveries and receiving entrance. A potential move of the Blue Bikes location was evaluated and found to be unfeasible. The proponent has also agreed to resident parking restrictions at this location, preventing the future tenants from obtaining on-street parking permits. Our office received 31 letters in opposition, including one from the Friends of North Broadway, 27 notes, 27 letters in support. There was also a petition of opposition signed by 50 abutters. The opposition mainly focused around concerns related to the height, the greater density being proposed in an area that does not have extensive public transit, as well as concerns related to potential increase in traffic on the First Street corridor. Those letters in support mainly focused on the 8,000-square-foot ground floor community space, the affordable housing units that were being proposed, and the addition of new street trees to the streetscape. Some who originally opposed this development have since decided to support based on the sincerity of the proponent to explain the rationale behind various design decisions and the care regarding the potential impact on the community. That information will defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, we have a few raised hands here. One second, go to the panelists. Councilor Murphy's office and Councilor Flynn's office. Either one of you can go ahead.
Hello and good afternoon, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin O'Sullivan and I'm from Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy is in support based on the continued work that this project has based on the continued work that this project has done to engage with the community, even going so far as to hone this project based on the community's input, also for the support of the direct abutter. And as you've heard Attorney Hanley mention, the multiple benefits that this project has structurally, furthering the goals of IDP, but also for the multiple public amenities this project provides, such as, you know, on-street parking spaces, a newly accessible sidewalk with street tree canopies, a publicly accessible open space in ground community space. So for all those reasons, Counselor Murphy is in support. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I hope everyone has a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn's office.
Hi, my name is Sydney. I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. Please note that Counselor Flynn previously sent an opposition letter to the BPDA board due to concerns from neighbors and abutters around the precedent of the height on the residential side of First Street, the density, and exacerbating South Boston's existing parking crisis with two hundred and thirty-six units and one hundred and twenty-five parking spots. At that time, he expressed his concern that this project was not ready for the board and was seeking additional good-faith compromises between community and the proponent. It is our understanding that since the time the proponent has done a number of meetings and site visits to work with relevant civic organizations and neighbors on a number of issues, including moving the lobby to First Street, scaling back the height and fifth and sixth stories to First Street, creating additional multi-bedroom units. The developer also agreed to move the Blue Bike station from West Second to West First, and BTD in the city should work on that issue. While Counselor Flynn is pleased to see these compromises, he continues to have philosophical disagreements with the Planning Department and Boston Transportation Department, specifically when it comes to South Boston's parking crisis and the need for parking to include sufficient parking to not negatively impact nearby residents' quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, BPDA.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Stephen Harding, and I'm a senior project manager at the City of Boston Planning Department. And thank you for your time today. On September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, the Boston Planning Development Agency, now the Planning Department, received a letter of intent from the proponent on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-three. We've received a project notification form on the proposal pursuant to section ADB dash five point three of the code. I hosted Impact Advisory Group, IAG meetings for the proposal on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. I also hosted public meetings for the proposal on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, July ninth, two thousand twenty-four. The project was approved by the Planning Department on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Therefore, proof and belt, this proposal would add thirty-six affordable units to the city's affordable housing stock. I can confirm that the team met with the Planning Department, the Planning Department review team, after meeting with the community. The updates that the project has made are acceptable and can be conceived through the Planning Department's design review process. Thank you.
Sorry, Bob?
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. The Mayor's Vision Zero program requires that twenty-five percent of the spaces on the, under Article eighty have the charging stations in place. The remaining seventy-five have to, has to have the infrastructure in place for future installation of a charging station. And from what I can see, there's forty-two spaces on stackers, and you can't put a charging station on the upper part of a stacker. So that leaves fifty-one spaces that I'd like to request that the, the proponent have the infrastructure ready for future installation of a charging station. Thank you.
Perfect. I have a few raised hands. I will start with Philip and then go to Donna. Try to get to as many people as we can, but if you would prefer to leave your comments in the chat, you can do that as well. Phil?
Yes, hello. I'm Phil Baloney, the owner of the directly adjacent site at two seventy West Second Street. And I'm here today to offer my full support for the project and its required zoning relief. We've owned our property, which spans the block from West Second to West First, for seventy-two years. So my own memory of this part of South Boston and indeed the entire area that we now call the Seaport is deeply entrenched. We share a vision with Jones Street to help make West First a premier new residential corridor that exists in full harmony with the neighborhood while also creating the new housing units that our city so badly needs. I've closely followed the evolution of the project plans from their inception, and they have my full support. They've done an outstanding job incorporating a sixth floor into the original design of the building, reflecting a sensitivity to neighborhood concerns while also including the added density that's absolutely essential to mounting a financially sustainable project. It's exciting to see these important new residential developments come to life. I hope this project will gain the board's full approval. We look forward to working closely with them and with the neighborhood when construction begins on the site. Thank you so much.
Tuskah? Yeah, sorry, Donna. Go ahead, Donna. You want me to get Tuskah?
Hi, my name is Donna Brown. I'm a member of the IAG and a South Boston resident. And I'm speaking also on behalf of David Garten, a fellow member of the IAG. And we're both in support of this project. It's, the proposed project will take a really underutilized industrial site that has been a challenge for the neighborhood for generations and turn it into much-needed affordable housing, community space, additional trees, improvements to the sidewalks, and as well as the open space at the corner of E Street and West Second Street. So we feel that it'll be a real asset to the neighborhood, and we're both in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Matt? And then Natasha?
Hello, my name is Matt Jones. I'm also a member of the Article eighty IAG for this project, and I'm also a direct abutter. I live half a block away down the street. As, as both a direct abutter and a member of the IAG, it's been intimately involved in the Article eighty process from the beginning. I am very impressed with the proponents' efforts in to listen to the community and to respond to that and make changes to the project. I was frankly somebody who, early on in the project, was not happy with some aspects of it and was opposed to it. But it's been really extraordinary working with the proponents and their team to have a direct dialogue with them, to understand our concerns and to respond to them. So for that reason, I'm happily in support and encourage the board to grant the relief that they're seeking. I'd also like to thank Lydia Pulaski from the Mayor's Office and Mark Begonicle from the BPDA to, for also facilitating that dialogue and listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha? And then John?
Hi there. So I am also in a butter of the, the project itself. I live in a three-family directly across the street. And so I care, you know, quite deeply about what, what does come into this spot here. I have personally been heavily involved in the process since the first public meeting. And I also, you know, as Matt noted, was one of the individuals who previously signed that opposition letter many months ago when the project first became open to public feedback. Since then, my attitude towards the project has changed a bit, mostly after seeing the latest round of changes that the developers have made to the proposal just in favor of the community. Some of those asks came directly from me and were representative of a few of us in the community here, especially moving the lobby in the package room from West Second Street. West Second Street is mostly two- and three-story condo buildings, and it's a narrow one-way street. This is, it would have been a huge community disruption for us to have it, you know, in the original proposal. So the fact that they've changed that for us is great. You know, obviously, I, you know, I don't think the project is going to, to be one hundred percent what everyone was expecting, I think, in terms of the height, for example. But I do think that they've scaled that back and have tried their best to meet us halfway, I would say, with some of those requests. So I am also in support of the project. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to John.
Thank you. I also am a direct abutter and live on the corner of West Second and E Street. I also was one of the ones that was involved in the early Article eighty signing, getting neighbors involved, because I was very much against this project. I will say that as we went through the process, both Councilman Flynn and Murphy's office have been very helpful in working with us, as well as the Mayor's Office and their liaison to build a community where we can communicate with the developer directly. After the last four months going back and forth, the developer heard us, they did as much as they could to change what we wanted to have changed. Like others have said, it has not been a one hundred percent of what we want, but it never is. And I feel like we were heard as neighbors. I think that this will be a really welcome addition to the neighborhood. For me, looking at a crayneyard is not ideal. So seeing a lively building, you know, with, with residents that actually communicate and walk around the neighborhood on the streets. A lot of the things that they've done with the trees and the traffic calming and things just make it a real neighborhood. Because right now, it's a dead end between where we are and the Seaport. And this will act as a bridge. And I think it's a testimony to the developers that took the time to actually hear us and work with us and not just say yes and then move on to something else and not do, or at least, you know, come to an agreement where we could. I hope other developments look at this as a way, because the city makes it really hard to get things done as a resident when you're hearing something's happening in your neighborhood that's going to be really large, and it's scary at first. I wish the city had better ways to communicate with us so that we didn't have to wait until after we opposed it, you know, built this army against it to start communicating with the developers. I've spoken to many people in my building as well, and they've asked me to convey the same thing. They very much ask for the support of this committee today to go forward with this. It was done in the right way. I look forward to seeing how it, how it comes out at the very end. So thank you.
Thanks. That's the same one. Please add new information and keep it brief.
Hello, I am the principal at Masari Studios, an artist collective that has called Midway Artist Studios home for the last five years. Our studio, our business, has supported this project since last year, and we recognize the importance of this work at large to support the community, the community's immediate needs, like housing and parking, while also elevating the community directly through affordable housing, the eight thousand square feet of community mixed-use space, new cafe, and open space for, and integrating the mature trees. We really think this would make quite a difference and really cultivate the neighborhood that is there. And this project has the full support from Masari Studios. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you want me to keep going? There's about three additional raised hands. I'll, I'll take one more, and if others can just put your comments in the chat. Thanks, Christine.
Hi, this is Christine Valencourt. I'm the president of the Four Point Arts Community and also a South Boston resident. I'm in full support of this project. Thank you very much to the developers and everyone who listened to the community. I'm especially excited about the community, the eight thousand six hundred square feet of community space and also the open space, the beautiful open space that you're planning around it. I'd love to see a piece of sculpture by a Massachusetts artist in your garden there, but another time. But I just want to thank you and support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I don't know if there's anything you wanted to respond to as the applicant briefly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only to say deep gratitude for the neighbors who participated in comment today, but also worked with us through this process and to the BPDA. I think what you've heard and certainly what my client is committed to is making sure that this is a respectful and healthy and contributing development as we move forward, and we appreciate all of the input and guidance and support throughout this process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would, I can perform a motion of approval with the provisals as listed at the, on the BPD board memorandum. And also I would like to ask that BPD takes a look at the design corner of the building that can be viewed from First and D Street, that is right next to the existing, an existing building. It appears from the renderings that there are some kind of window conflicts. If the BPD can just take a look at that design of the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Vazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for a fifteen-minute break.
Recording stopped.
President, Madam Chair.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Present.
Ms. Beter Barazza.
Present.
Lord Jurors, Mr. Stembridge, remind me we are a six-member board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving ahead to those who have a copy, page seven of the agenda. We have... Case at the top of the page has been deferred. And we go to case BOA 1671229 with the address of 35 Sudan Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Josh Bloomberg. And I also have the architect Beth McDougall here to answer any questions. Straightforward project at 35 Sudan Street in the Dorchester section of Boston. The proposal, as written, is to change the occupancy from a three... existing three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling by converting basement unit into a residential unit on the site. This particular sub-district is a... if we could pull up the presentation, Madam Ambassador. Thank you. That's just... Let me go back one slide, please. That's just a front picture of the existing structure, which is typical up and down this particular section of the street. It's a 3F 2000 district. Just by way of background, my client had purchased the building. There is an elevated basement area. The slope, as you go back, really changes the elevation. And the building... The basement was already kind of built out. There was an existing bathroom down there. There was a bedroom area, but he never used it. Obviously wanted to go through the process to legalize it. The... You could start going to the plans. Thank you, Madam Ambassador. The proposal is to have a two-bedroom, two-bath with living, dining, and kitchen area. Small office area at 843 square feet. This particular basement area has eight-foot or would have eight-foot floor-to-sailing height. Two full means of egress. Main entrance on the side of the building and then one in the rear as well. Excuse me. No work to be done on the other units. Those are all existing three-bedroom units on the site as well. We did submit eight letters of direct abutter support as part of our proposal. We had no issues from neighbors. We had a butter meeting. We were asked by our direct neighbor to the left to... because we're adding a side entrance to put some screening and buffering, some landscape design, some fencing along the walkway on the left side of the property. We, as was mentioned, no other work to be done on the property. You can see the grade change really in these elevation slides as well. There will be a dedicated sprinkler room. Basement would be fully sprinkled per code. And right now, that, as I had mentioned, that's already laid out as a unit. And the... Just to point out, the BPDA did recommend support and really heightened that this type of project using this ADU by keeping the existing building is really streamlined in their new housing zoning initiative. And in the future, would likely... They're pushing to not even have zoning relief needed for these kind of ADU units. With that, I can pause. Answer any questions, or the team can answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board some background information on the community process. An abutters meeting was held on October 28th. There were no concerns raised in that meeting. Later on, we did receive a letter in opposition from an abutter expressing concerns that the additional unit would increase competition for parking on the street, as well as expressing they felt that the current property was not well-maintained. The applicant went on to meet with the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, which voted on January 6th. The association voted to oppose the proposal with four members in support and 20 opposed. Of that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus from Council of Fitzgerald's office. I've seen our offices, heard a lot of concern from the community in opposition to the proposal. Due to the community concerns, our office is at record in opposition to this project. Thank you.
We have no raised hands at the moment. Any other questions from the board?
May I just respond, Madam Chair? If I can...
Yeah, please.
Great, thank you. Just to point out, I know that it was mentioned about parking. We are within less than a 10-minute walk from the Red Line T Station. And we did submit from direct abutters on Sudan 40, 20, 36, and 25 Sudan Street, all letters of support we did submit to the board. And as was mentioned, there was not one concern from direct abutters at the actual meetings, both at the Civic as well as at the abutter meeting.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Beter Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, next we have case BOA 1636283 with the address of 9 Hillcroft Road. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Lorraine, the applicant for 9 Hillcroft. I last presented to the board in December. The matter was deferred because we had a missing plot plan. We have since submitted that. That is not the current one. Should be at the end of the presentation. If this is the current one, current presentation that we submitted. But we also want to acknowledge that the new plot plan was submitted late. The construction project for 9 Hillcroft Road in Jamaica Plain involves alterations to the existing footfall, transforming an unfinished storage area into a dorma, ultimately creating a bedroom suite, full bathroom, three closets measuring 574 square feet. The existing square footage is 2,739, and the proposed would make it 3,313 square feet. This will be a rear dorma, so not really changing the front of the house. The height will be two and a half feet below the ridge line. The home maintains single-family while expanding space for a growing family. Can we just go back, please, to the A010? I'm looking it up. Okay, let's go to the top.
Yes.
So can I ask Mr. Hampton, in the meantime, if you have updated plans since you noted a deferral request?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. We still haven't received an updated plot plan that shows this property on its plot. The one that we reviewed prior to this was a different piece of property altogether, so our recommendation stands for deferral. We just haven't received anything new.
But... Right. Other than the plot plan... Mr. Hampton, I would say it's a pretty straightforward proposal.
I would agree. Yes.
And we could put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that a site plot planned by a stamp surveyor... By a surveyor... Land surveyor be submitted to BPD and ISD.
I can agree to that, sure.
Okay. Great.
Well, with that, are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on August 28th. Very lightly attended, with only one inquiry that was addressed at the meeting. Our next proposal was presented to the Jamaica Hills Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, where the proposal was received unanimous approval. Thank you for your time at the office. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you. Hearing no other. We have no additional raised hands. May I have a motion?
Yeah, given that the applicant has received majority community support and that the violations are minor in regards to an FAR being triggered and also the stories, which we have already seen in front of us, is pretty minimum. I'm going to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant submits a plot plan by a licensed surveyor stamped to ISD and to BPD prior to approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Beter Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA 1643116 with the address of 13 Winship Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your long time and attention today. So before you, we have updated plans, and this is our second time before you requesting an extension. Not that we haven't been prepared to proceed, but it's taken ISD a long time to get through a second iteration of plans that we have submitted to them back in September. We presented before the BAIA in August. The BAIA requested three important things, all of which we were able to accommodate, which we'll walk through. We updated plans after our September meeting with the BAIA, confirming that they were happy with those updated plans. Resubmitted the updated survey in front of you and the updated architectural plans to ISD in September. And we were not able to get them through ISD and into your possession before our scheduled December 3rd extended meeting, which punted us to today. Three important things requested by the BAIA in August. Number one, rear yard parking, okay? Number two, we previously had an internal stairwell, a second means of egress, external to the building in the form of an exterior deck with stairs. They wanted a second means of internal egress, so we removed the external stairs, adopted that into the plans you'll see in front of you for a secondary means of egress. And then also, they were concerned about kind of shortening and making the footprint of the building less. So by removing the roughly, you know, nine feet of decking and stairs off the rear, we're able to reduce the perspective massing of the building to accommodate their three requests. To the immediate left of our parcel is a large public parking lot. So importantly, A, we don't have any abutters to our left, we only have cars. Number two, we would never be able to get access to the rear of our lot across the parking lot for an ingress and egress to the rear yard. The owner is also the owner of 9 Winship to our immediate right. In controlling the parcels to the immediate right, he's able to then access the rear of the parcel through largely existing paving to provide parking to the rear of the building. We specifically let BAIA and the neighborhood know that, you know, we did not necessarily think that the BPDA would love the additional off-street parking, but that was a demand of the neighborhood, which, given the owner's access and ownership of the parcel to the right, we're able to accommodate. So we're in a delicate position of accommodating the requests of abutters and the neighborhood and the BAIA and also Brighton Main Streets with the risk of potentially offending the BPDA. So that is kind of the fabric of those three changes, starting from August to where we are today. We have BAIA support. We have the support of Kelly McGrath and her now replacement, I think, Chair Director of the Boston Main Streets. As it relates to the physical structure, you can see we have a very, very narrow lot tapering from about 20 feet in the front to 21 feet in the rear. That also means that even short of demolition of a building, we don't really have the ability to have a 10-foot-wide driveway to access the rear with the structure above it. So our only real way of accommodating the demanded rear yard parking was to access it across 9 Winship to the immediate right. The proposal is to take the existing structure, add on an addition, rendering it a two-family of three stories with a single-floor first-floor unit and then a combined second and third-floor two-bedroom. Sorry. Second unit on the second and third floor. If you want to progress down through the drawings, you can see the addition, the existing structure. Okay, our cited violations, a very, very tiny existing footprint to propose addition. The building, unfortunately, given the very narrow lot, kind of has to be very long and linear to realize internal square footage. But the end results of the footprint are what you see on the plans immediately in front of you right now. So again, just to reiterate, we come to you with the support of the BAIA, and hopefully they're still on the call to speak on behalf of them, Annabella. And I've also been in communications with Kelly McGrath of the Brighton Main Streets, who's also voiced their concern and support. Primary concern of the Brighton Main Streets is the current condition of the property that my client absorbed. The sellers had this property in their possession for nearly about 100 years. There's a lot of existing rat tunnels, so a very aggressive rodent mitigation plan is being sought by at least Brighton Main Streets and the abutters, which the owner is actively working on, number one. They clean the lot, number two. And we're very happy to work with the city to make sure that we, you know, have a active and comprehensive rodent control plan in place when it comes to the actual demolition. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to the board for questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
You're confirming that you... That the applicant does own 7 and 9... I think it's called with...
Winship?
Winship, yes, ma'am.
Winship.
Correct.
Correct? Because I just looked it up in the... In the city assessor, but it had a different ownership, but I'm sure that's probably the same applicant. I just wanted confirmation.
Confirmed, yeah.
Okay, great.
They have legal control, yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, good afternoon. Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 23rd of July, at which one concern was raised relating to rodent activity on the parcel. Our office received no other comments from abutters. Petitioner additionally presented to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, which offered their support with a number of provisos. Particularly important to that group was the commitment to parking that was presented by Mr. Smith or represented to you by Mr. Smith in his presentation. We received no other letters, no other comments. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have no additional raised hands at the moment. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I do see one more raised hand. I'm not sure if...
Yep, Annabella just raised her hand. Can I take her? Yes. Okay, Annabella.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on with rodent support. We're very happy with the work on the rodent and cleaning out the distressed property. We are very much concerned about the parking in Bloom Street District that was blocked through the bike lanes and the bus lanes. So we did specifically ask that the parking be included for that reason, and we'd like to be on record in support. Thank you.
Thanks, Annabella. No additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, are you open for a question?
From the board, yes.
Okay. I mean, I was just... I would like to know BPD's position on having kind of a driveway on a different property. I know in the past, there's been some concerns that if the owner ever decides to sell, you know, that driveway doesn't necessarily belong to, you know, to the unit that it's associated with in terms of the sale. So I just wanted to understand, you know... Because we heard from Boston Transportation Department by Bob in regards to that it does work. Ownership needs to be confirmed, but from a zoning point of view, what's BPD's position in regards to access from a different property, even though they own it?
Are you still with us, Mr. Hampton?
And if it's not Mr. Hampton, I'm just putting it up for discussion with my colleagues if they see that...
I can... If it helps the board, I can speak from personal perspective. I have another client right now undergoing the same thing with trying to build to the rear of another structure, and they control two parcels. ISD has asked for a proposed easement, which I have drafted, which they would want to see recorded with the registry to memorialize that future access.
Yes.
It has not been recorded yet pending approval of the BPDA to actually proceed, but it has been drafted by me and provided to the applicant for presentation to ISD for confirmation of that being the intended legal access to run with the land in perpetuity.
Right. So you...
I imagine this idea would be required here.
Yeah.
And that's what we've done before. Yep, easement.
So I have not drafted that easement yet, but upon request, I will certainly do so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So that's my understanding of how that issue is addressed, as confirmed by ISD in the process.
Yep. Okay, so I think I can put forward a motion. I'd like to... I would like to recommend a motion of approval with a proviso that an easement will be drafted to provide kind of legal access through that other property for the driveway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Beter Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. May I confirm, I did not hear BPDA design review as being an additional proviso, but given the scope?
I think, given the scope, BPD design review would be appropriate, so they can also review your site plan access.
Is that confirmed across the board too?
Any concerns from the board? Okay, confirmed.
All right, thank you kindly.
Thank you for picking that up. Usually you want less provisos, but you...
It's standard, I imagine. I didn't want to have the problem where they...
I don't know that he wanted it. I think he wanted to confirm it.
Yes.
Have a good day, everyone.
All right, thank you all.
Yes, thank you. I will go.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
We had one case...
Oh, 2 Brooks, Brook Street, yes. Is that gentleman back or applicant?
Is anyone present at 2 Brook Street?
I don't see any raised hands.
Going twice? I'll leave it to you, fat and shit.
I'll suggest a motion to deny without prejudice?
Second. Second.
Somebody make the motion.
Motion to deny, I'm proud of this.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Beter Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. And with that, I will see you all next time. Good day.
Thank you. I'll be coming back.
Thank you. All right.